It is six, oh, don't, six P M. And we will call to order the organizational meeting of the Caroline Board of Supervisors. For January eleventh of twenty twenty two. Believe it or not, this is the twenty eighth time I've done this. I'm getting very old. Anyway, we need a, the first item of business is a election of a chairman, so we need a nomination for chair.
I make a motion that Reggie Underwood be chairman for the next year.
Any other, have a second? Okay, I didn't hear that. Oh, good. Any, any other nominations? We have a nomination?
I'll nominate, yes, yes, there's, I'll nominate Mr. Floyd Thomas.
I'll second that.
Okay, wonderful. So we have two nominations. Always throws me into a tizzy of which I'm supposed to do, but I think we take the first one first.
First one first.
So on the nomination for Mr. Underwood for chair for the calendar year of twenty two. All in favor, signal up saying aye.
Aye.
You're gonna vote for yourself, right?
I think we need a roll call on that because we couldn't hear down here who did what. I'll just start with Mr. Forehand.
Aye.
Mr. Black.
Aye.
Mr. Sealy.
Aye.
Mr. Underwood.
Aye.
Mrs. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. So that's four to two. My math is right. There's a, with that being affirmative, there's no need to do the second one, or do you?
The second one is no longer necessary since the first vote passed.
That's what I would think. Oh. Right. I don't think you need another one. All right. Oh, Mr. Underwood, do you like to take over the rest of the proceedings? It's much easier to do from up there than down here.
My job.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next on the agenda is the election of a vice chair.
I make a motion, we nominate Mr. Jeff Black for vice chair.
Second.
There's a nomination for Mr. Jeff Black and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, roll call, please. Mr. Forehand.
Aye.
Mr. Black.
Aye.
Mr. Sealy.
Aye.
Mrs. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. And I vote nay. Motion carries five to one. Our adoption of the rules of order for twenty twenty one board meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the rules currently presented to us this evening.
There's a motion that we adopt the rule of order.
Discussion.
There's second.
Second.
Well, second.
Second by Mr. Black. Discussion. Mr. Thomas?
One of our rules is, I believe it's item five, I was trying to find it. It says board members cannot read letters during the public hearing. And I think during the pandemic, we've allowed letters to be read, so. I'd, I'd ask that we change that to say no letters unless it's determined by the board.
Or emergency action, would you?
Just period, just determined by the board.
Is that a motion, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
I'll second that because it does get lengthy.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Thomas that we adopting the rule, make a rule change that letters will not be read unless it's an emergency. A second by Mr. Sealy.
And I'll just state for the record for clarity, that's section five hyphen four subsection D that's being amended.
Say, I can't hear you.
Five point four D.
Yeah, five dash four D.
We're just reaffirming that condition because we have been not following that during the pandemic. I think we actually modified that.
Well, as, as stated in the packet right now, it says, members of the board of supervisors shall not read letters from the public as part of the public hearing process, so.
And, and my motion, and my motion was unless determined by the board.
So you're adding that extra language.
Correct.
Yep.
There's motion of proper, there's a motion and a proper second that we change it to, to add unless approved by the board. You're gonna amend your second?
I'll amend it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion to adopt the agenda then.
Now, we're gonna do the regular meeting first?
No, we need to adopt the bylaws. We adopted the change. We need to go back to the first motion. That's okay.
Okay, you're right. All right, so we're gonna go back to the or need to call the meeting to order then, is that right, correct?
No, the adoption of rules of order, right.
All right, back to C.
Right.
Sorry. Is there a motion that we now accept agenda, organizational meeting, agenda item C as amended, yes?
No, yeah.
It's been properly motion and second that we are now adopt the rules of order adding to section five point four as approved by the board. Any discussion, which we already had. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now the schedule of the regular board meetings. If I have any issue with the meetings in the calendar for twenty twenty two. Any changes necessary?
I just noticed that we have a July twelfth board meeting and typically we've not been having a meeting and a board meeting in July. We can determine that later or we can, we can do it now. I, we haven't done a July meeting in a while.
Right.
What's the pleasure of the board?
We can get rid of it and then need, we can add it later on.
I'll take a motion. If you make that motion, I'll.
So moved that we eliminate the July meeting.
All right. There's a motion to move the July twelfth meeting from the, the July meeting from the calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it.
I make a motion, we adopt the amended calendar now.
All right, there's a motion that now we move, we adopt the, a motion to, uh, can't get it out the seat, a motion to accept the schedule for the regular board supervisor's meeting with the exception that we remove the July twelfth meeting twenty twenty two. All in favor, say, um, all, I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. In your packet is the appointments for the board of supervisors. Are there any changes that people would like to make? Any? Any changes, some, anything that you don't like, or?
Well, regarding the agenda for this evening?
No, the.
No, just the, the board, the board packet, the board appointments.
They are, they're on, they're on the second page, the back of the second page of the agenda.
I'm willing to keep all mine.
I, I'm willing to keep mine.
I like mine.
I'll keep mine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adopt the board appointment, board of supervisor appointments as presented.
There's a motion to keep the.
I just, I just have a question. The broadband committee, is that a supervisor or is that an auxiliary committee? Did that be on the list? That was.
I, I think it has been, it was auxiliary, but I think it should be on the, we should.
I just didn't know if it was left off by.
We should, we should add.
We could add that. I'm, I'll, I'll change my motion to amend it to leave. Now, if Mr. Thomas will stay on the broadband committee, I'll gladly stay. And we can amend those board appointments to that, to add that to it as well.
Mr. Thomas, is that? All right, so the first thing I think we need to do is add the broadband committee.
Yes.
So on the board of supervisor's appointments, we're going to add the broadband committee. Serving last year was Mr. Thomas and Mr. Sealy. So I think the first motion I need is to add the board supervisor's appointments to include the broadband committee.
Mr. Underwood, I would move that we accept the supervisor appointments with the addition of the broadband committee upon which Mr. Thomas and Mr. Sealy serve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been motion and properly second that we add the broadband committee to the board supervisor's appointments. That appointment would include Mr. Thomas and Mrs. Sealy on that committee. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, can I get a motion to close?
I make, I make a motion, we close the organizational meeting for twenty twenty two.
There's a motion that we close the organization meeting for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Organizational meeting is closed. All right, I will now call the January eleventh, twenty twenty two board supervisor's meeting to order. Can we all stand for invocation? Gracious Father, once again, we come before you asking for your blessings. As you have filed, but to look upon this meeting this evening. Give us wisdom, help us to do the work of the county. Continue to bless us in a special way. All blessed, we ask your precious name. Amen. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Lord, for the high state of America, and to the republic for which he stands. One nation under God, indivisible, never be dashed. Opening board comments, Mr. Forehand?
Just a couple. Wanted to say thank you to the county staff, emergency responders, fire, EMS, sheriff's department, dispatchers. They had a, their work cut out for them during the winter storm, winter storm. The facilities folks, just a lot of, a lot of moving parts, a lot of work to do. And I think we fared it as a county well. And we're still stressed from COVID, from understaffing, from things like that, but they're, they they stepped up and made it work and all the way across the board. So I want to commend you for, you all for, for your efforts and very, very thankful for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, so first of all, I wanted to just kind of reiterate, I, I nominated Mr. Thomas for chair, not because I thought Mr. Underwood did a terrible job last year as chair, actually, I thought he did an excellent job. And Mr. Underwood did a really, really good job with communicating with all of us, so I, I can't stress that enough. My vote for Mr., was Mr. Thomas was because since the, in the six years, Mr. Thomas has not been chair yet, so, in the last six years, so that was the reason for my vote. So nothing against Mr. Underwood, so I don't want you to, Mr. Chair, to think it was an any affront to you whatsoever. I do want to, once again, thank emergencies and what Mr. Forehand said, the emergency services here in Caroline for the job that they did. The western part of the county, especially going out into some of the gated communities, looked like a war zone. I just don't, I, I'd never seen anything like it. And it's, it was amazing how many trees were down. I also want to thank R E C. R E C has been having daily, had been having daily Zoom calls. And they were very, very attentive to concerns that I had. So I want to thank them, the county staff. I, I do think that in the future, maybe we can look at, Mr. Chairman, we can look at maybe having some of the warming stations in areas of the western part of the county as well as the east, just because of the fact there were citizens that were with trees down that had a hard time getting into, coming across the county. So that, that is, that is that for that. So thank them. I would like, if it's possible, at some point, I'd, I'd mention this this year, and I think, Mr. Chairman, we have talked about it, the comprehensive plan. I really think that needs to be, we need to update that. I, I believe Mr. Fincham said, when I asked him, it's eleven or twelve years old, the last time it was touched. So I, I do have concerns for that, that we need to update it. And one of the reasons why, and I know in a democracy, we, we all have our votes, the last vote we took on in December in regards to the the bizarre site, that's one of the reasons why I want to look because being from that area, I, I really fear the one ten exit is the last two lane exit between Richmond and Washington, D.C. So there's only one bridge that goes over ninety five between Richmond and Washington, D.C. that's too late, and it's the one ten exit. And that is not being touched in our, when we, when we're expanding the road on Lady Smith Road, that bridge is not being touched. So when we start talking about monster truck traffic, amount of, a lot of trucks coming across, we only have a two lane bridge. So I think we need to really, really look at how much industrial we can put in there, and we really have to look at replacing that bridge. And then finally, I do want to reiterate, we do have the polar bear plunge coming up, February twelfth. So we've already had several corporate sponsors, the State Fair of Virginia has, is our first monster corporate sponsor we've had, so can't thank them enough. So anyway, that's it, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, just a couple. The damage throughout the county, I don't know how we'll get the rest of it cleaned up as you drive around, there were trees laying on the guardrails, sort of where they were just chopped off and left. I don't know what it's going to take to clean that up, or who's going to do it, but I know it's something we're going to have to take a look at. There were several really good stories about fire and rescue and one in particular of a, a gentleman who needed oxygen and with no power. Of course, his oxygenation didn't work, so they were, fire and rescue were able to get him two large bottles of oxygen at a pretty tenuous time in the storm. And I just want to say that there were many, many stories about fire and rescue that will come out over time, but this rivaled the nineteen ninety four ice storm, and I was here for that. And the trees breaking and cracking as you stood outside and listened to them was reminiscent of that. So I'm hoping we don't see damage like this again for another, you know, twenty plus years. But for all the power that was out, I know that Dominion and Bowling Green fortunately didn't lose power. It's the first time in eons, but I know that R E C had all hands on deck and they were working tirelessly. I applaud all those folks as well as everybody in fire and rescue, the sheriff's office. And again, I don't think anybody gives enough credit to the dispatchers that were nonstop. So thanks to all of our staff that chipped in. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy and Mrs. Long.
I want to wish everyone a happy new year and a healthy one as we move forward in this second go around of caution. But I only have one comment that has not already been made because certainly we have to say thank you to to all those who were out battling this weather, be it our staff or be it R E C or Dominion Power. Certainly, that is not a job any of us would look forward to doing is climbing up those poles when they're covered with ice or dealing with electricity in that weather. So we do appreciate those, but also want to appreciate our staff because they were operating centers and they were doing overtime and they were answering the phone when people couldn't get out and doing the best they can to stay in touch. So I just appreciate neighbors helping neighbors and staff helping staff and look forward to springtime.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I want to reiterate, I think what we all said, a thank you to Vida, of course, the co-op and Dominion and personally, I know how dangerous that job is because I, I lost a very good friend trying to restore power a few years ago. So we do appreciate the work that those folks did. I wanted to remind all the citizens here and listening that personal property forms are no longer required. I got a letter in the mail today and I hope the rest of the community does that says just that. The personal property form we had to file before February first or get a penalty is no longer in force. So I think that's a great thing. And last, we're considering gap funding for a powerhouse and I, I mentioned it to the chair before, I think we need to, to look at some gap funding, maybe for Habitat. They have some issues with their grant funding and unfortunately are starting to lose people. So maybe we can consider that at our next meeting, we can discuss it sometime today, but maybe at our next meeting, we consider some action. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I just have a couple of comments. Certainly want to thank the staff for all that they, they did and their patience during the weather that we encounter. Secondly, I'd like to thank certainly all the farmers who are out cutting limbs and trying to clear the roads. I think without them, we would probably still be in bad shape in some areas. Finally, there is probably looking at our staff across the county. And I, I just think we're not where we should be in terms of giving, having people to do our services. And I think we should really take the time, maybe not tonight, but another meeting and look at our staffing to make sure that we have people in place to do the jobs that we're asking them to do. I look at Mr. Fincham's office and he's there by himself, basically. I don't think that we have too many single points of failure. And we have too many people who are in line to retire. And if we're not grooming people to take those positions, we could find ourselves in pretty bad shape. So I'd ask that we, we look at it and we begin to plan so how we can back up our personnel to make sure that we have the personnel to do the job. That's my three comments. Thank you. Next, addendums to the meeting, Mr. Forehand?
Um, I didn't see the, any map discussion on, on our agenda. I see the maps, so I don't see any.
Redistricting.
Correct.
Presentation number two.
Oh, I missed that. Okay, we just discussed during the presentation. Okay.
Yes.
Never mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I was contacted by some citizens in regards to, I think the county put out some information on storm debris. And I was wondering, that, that's only for how long? Were you just taking that?
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days. Yeah, is there a way, is there a way we could add that to the agenda? Because I had several that said fourteen days may not be enough times. Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah.
So you want to add it to?
It's, oh, it's, it's E on the consent or local.
No, that's the emergency consent. The, you created a policy years ago that the chief and I can get together with Public Works and declare a debris emergency because of either a deratio or, you know, any kind of storm. So we, we looked at the damage and said we could do that on our own. It doesn't take board action. I think that policy and the chief's probably is fourteen days the max that's allowed in that policy? Is that something we can extend, chief? We'll, we'll check into that, but if there's still a tremendous amount of debris, we'll look at extending that. But I think that was the original language was fourteen days.
I think the concern is, is, and if you look around the county, there's, it's just, it's just going to be very, very difficult for citizens to get it done in fourteen, yeah. And it's cold and we, possibility of more storms.
It might snow again. Right, we understand. We, we'll continue to work on that too.
So do we need to add it to the agenda or?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
We'll work with the citizens to make sure that we can get things cleaned up. And we can't leave it open for a year, but I mean, we'll, we'll be reasonable and, and look at what people are accomplishing to, to do that.
The chief's. Do we, do we have certain bad spots that are worse than others that we could?
You can look at the weight totals of debris coming in. I mean, when I take, when I'm taking trailers, there's tons of trailers and pickups going in with debris. You'll know by just the volume whether it's getting there or not.
Right. The, the policy allows us to extend another seven and Lake Caroline's already asked for another extension, and so we, we're already up to twenty one days.
The lake communities are, the lake communities, and, and we had one, like, for example, and I know, I, I think it might be the same in Lake Caroline, but Lake Landor, we have a debris and it's already filled up, so they can't, they, they have no place to go with it, so they've, they've got to come to us.
Eight now and leave it alone.
Yep.
Why don't we just make it twenty eight now and leave it alone?
Just make it.
Would that be sufficient?
Make it twenty eight days now.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, we can just direct staff to go twenty eight days. I don't know that we have to do anything.
I mean, as long as you're all comfortable with it, we're just trying, we're just working, trying to get it so that people can get it, you know.
But what is that, let me just, can we explain what that means when we do the, I mean, I think that more than anything will help everybody because.
I'm going to fill in for Joey, but that's really his question. But go ahead.
What is the storm debris declaration really mean to everybody?
It means that, that debris can be brought in the landfills by commercial haulers or residential haulers for free. So there's.
Right.
It's, it's always free for residential haulers because they just take it in Bowling Green to the
Correct.
tree pile.
That's where it all, that's where it all is.
So if you have to hire somebody to do it.
They shouldn't be charging you for disposal if they're gonna, they can, they can take it in Caroline. And I guess that's what we need to make clear to everybody is that commercial haulers can bring it for free to the landfill in Bowling Green and dump it.
No stumps.
No stump, right, no stumps. But I mean, I think that's the part that I wanted to clarify is that the commercial, so people shouldn't be paying an additional tipping fee for debris if they've got somebody locally or, or even out of the county that could bring it and dump it for free.
Now, the question then becomes, how do we give notice to residents who have trees down and have hired commercial folks? What, what would be our process then, other than putting it on the website? And, you know, I, I've had some conversation with people in my community about other issues, but our only means of, of communication is the website, so.
Yeah, Caroline Alert, if people are signed up for it, maybe Facebook and some of the social media things that normally those, when we post one of those notices, the webmaster puts those everywhere our social media presence. Any of you that have your own social media sites, you know, you could certainly put that up and, and try to help us, but with no local paper, there's really no way to you know, other than social media and the website for people to know that.
See, that's the issue. Not, well, cut the off, Mr. Colley. Who, who's going to stop a person from saying, I have to pay for, to pay for removal and pay for dumping unless they know that, that they shouldn't charge them additional to take it to our landfill because we're not charging. And that's, that's kind of the issue.
Right. Normally, we don't take commercial haulers for debris anywhere. During this emergency, we do.
And that's what we're really concerned about. Could, could you put double dip in?
Mr. Colley, could you put a write-up or send it to us tomorrow about what it means, since that way we can push it up? We have social media pages. I know there's several in the county that are.
We'll get it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you.
Won't take, it won't take that much, but I, there, there's no way for us to really have a list of commercial tree people because they're probably coming from, you know, people are contacting them from all over various counties because everybody's, you know, Louisa Spotsy Stafford, Western Hanover, all those people are suffering with pretty much the same tree damage. So I'm sure there are all the tree people working like crazy. And normally they're hauling those to debris landfills where they're paying a tip and fee. And normally they're hauling those to debris landfills where they're paying a tip and fee for that material. We just provide it so that somebody can come in with commercial if they, if they want to.
Mr. Chair, I might also suggest in our post office, our postmaster allows us to have a community bulletin board. And so a lot of times the town has a special section and they'll put a notice up there. So you might want to check with your local post offices and see if they'll let you put up a flyer.
We can produce a flyer pretty quick.
People who go to get stamps or to use a P O box would see it. That would be a local outreach. Country stores are great places to, you know, if you can get flyers out to your districts. While we're on this topic, I have a question and I was going to ask you if we should put this under new business. The town of Port Royal asked if the county would be able to bring down a dump, I don't know, what do you call it?
Roll on, roll off.
Roll off, roll off. Roll off for them and they're willing to rent it so that citizens could, could put it right there and then haul it. If, if that was a policy that would be acceptable with the.
We, we have a problem leaving an unmanned roll on, roll off. The last time we tried that, we ended up with metal, an engine block, various things in there that are then covered up with debris.
They're, they're willing to hire somebody, actually.
It has to be secure.
Somebody with, with they.
But it would have to be somewhere, you know, brought in for one day, watched all day and then taken out of there the same day. Couldn't be, it couldn't be left overnight.
Be left overnight, right.
No, you believe what people are throwing in an open top.
And would they contact Mr. Sheeple about running that or do we need to do a decision? Does it need to be on the agenda to allow it?
We, I don't know that we have a rental policy. I'm sorry, Mr. Sheeple's under the weather.
Right.
You know, what that costs. It's not that we couldn't do it, we don't, we're not doing it for the other town and/or any neighborhood either. And we don't have but two spare boxes, so we're not blessed with a lot of roll on, roll off boxes that aren't in use all the time.
Years ago, we, we rented it and cleaned up, but I didn't know what the policy was now, so I couldn't answer their question.
Right. Joey, Joey and I talked, so we'll, we'll figure out a way, there's a way we can do it on a day that you can monitor. We have a box available. It might be a way to do it to cover, you know, to start travel costs, but.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Like I said, it has to be secure. You have to really watch what people throw away.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Mr. Sealy, Mr. Black, you?
Just had a question, because I was asking Mr. Sealy as well, with, with some of this wood that's coming in, this debris, is there, I mean, there, there are certain places around, like, I know Wright's Chapel has a mobile ministry or not a mobile, but they have a ministry for like delivering wood and so forth. Is there a way to kind of separate that wood and say, all right, this is good for, this would be good for, and if you want to come get it, you have this amount of time? Or is that a possibility for, I mean, because they service.
Comes in, it's just dumped off and then it's pushed, pushed with the, you know, loader we have at the landfill into a pile. It might be some sort of, that's more of a Mr. Sheeple question in the operation of, you know, how they could.
Could you look into that and see if it's?
A lot of it's such brush and junk and, you know, you have a good log and then, you know, a bunch of stuff nobody would want. But if there's some way somebody could use any of it, we'll see.
The real treachery is the poison ivy that comes out.
Oh, yeah, exactly right. And that's, and you can't see anything because there's no leaves on it.
Is it poison ivy or is it ivy? You pick.
All right, gentlemen. All right. Thank you, Mr. Colley, Mr. Sealy, any? I'm good, Mr. Chief. Thank you. Mrs. Long? Okay, Mr. Thomas, any amendments to the agenda? All right.
Staff has one.
Excuse me?
Staff has, we, we would like to add a resolution that, that declares the state of emergency over.
All right.
Did we already, did we already, it should be at your table. So we have one to ratify the one where we opened up a state, in the state of emergency, so we could open the shelters and warming stations, but we need one now to declare it's over as well.
All right. I see it's.
Should that go on consent?
Consider agenda, that's what.
Consent, yes, I would just put it right there with the other one.
Okay.
E, make it F or E dot one.
All right.
Chairman, make a motion, we adopt the agenda as amended with the end of state of emergency.
There's a second.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Long, there's a motion and a second that we approve the consent agenda with the addition of.
The whole agenda, the whole agenda.
Yeah, the whole agenda. With the addition of the emergency declaration to end the state of emergency. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Presentations. Of the fiscal twenty twenty-one audit. Farmer Cox, Boris. Smith.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman and members of the board. Tonight with us, we have Jay Sanudo from Robinson Farmer Cox Associates to present the annual comprehensive financial report and audit findings for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Ann Wall, who you all are familiar with from our past year's presentations, has recently retired this past December. However, Mr. Sanudo has been a part of our audit team for quite a few years and has extensive knowledge of the county's financial reportings and standings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will try to be as brief as legally required, but if I go too quickly, please stop and let me know if you have any questions as well. If you have the financial statements in front of you, I'd like to start off on, on page one, which is our opinion. And our opinion is unqualified, which is the best opinion that the county could receive. Going on to page thirteen and fourteen, that's, that's exhibit one. This is essentially what's, what's known as your balance sheet. This is on a accrual basis, which takes into account many things like, like your debt, your fixed assets, as well as actuarial adjustments that are done at state level for things like retirement and, and healthcare. So the, the net position, which is essentially, you know, equivocal to, to equity in a, in a for-profit business, is about four, forty-five million dollars, which is an increase from the prior year of about three point, thirty-eight point seven million. And that position for the school was a loss of about thirty-four million, negative thirty-four million. This is an increase of, from a negative thirty-three million from the prior year, but this is mainly because of pension-related liability increases of about two million, which is done at actuarial level at the state. Pages fifteen and sixteen, this is exhibit two. This is essentially the income statement on accrual basis. Again, this does include payment, it removes payments from debt, principal and, and payments for purchases of fixed assets. They usually will go on what's called a modified cash basis, financial statements, which we'll show here in a second. The adjustments from the governmental activities show a net change, which essentially is your net income of, of about seven million, with the water and sewer activities having a loss of about a hundred and eighty-five thousand and the school board having a loss of about one point seven million. But included in this loss for the school board was one point seven eight million that they gave back to the county. They have to show that as an expense on the, on their financial statements. Page seventeen and eighteen, which is your exhibit three. This is your balance sheet that's on a modified cash basis. Again, this kind of removes some of the debt and, and fixed assets, as well as the actuarial adjustments that are done at the state level for, for retirement and, and healthcare. You know, this, this basis shows that the, the county's governmental funds has about forty-four million in restricted and unrestricted cash and investments, which is an increase of about fifteen million from the prior year. The next page, page nineteen, this, this is exhibit four, which just kind of shows how you reconcile the, the modified cash basis to the accrual basis between these two reports. Again, you'll see some, some big outliers like one point three million in net pension liability and two point five million in net O P E B liabilities. Again, these are liabilities that the state has brought down to the county. And again, most of them are actuarial liabilities. If you go down to page twenty and twenty-one, this is exhibit five, which is again your statement of revenues and expenditures. And these are at a modified cash basis. On this basis, it shows that, that the change in the funds was about fifteen million through all the, the governmental funds, compared to last year's change, which was a loss of about nine hundred and fifty thousand. So it increased almost sixteen million. Next page, page twenty-two, again, this is, this is exhibit six. And this, this is how you reconcile the income statement from the modified cash basis that's on exhibit five to the full accrual basis that's on exhibit two. Again, you'll see some of these changes, like changes in O P E B, pension liabilities and, and amortization of certain funds charges, excuse me. The next page is twenty-three and twenty-four, which is exhibit seven. This is the balance sheet for the proprietary fund, which are the utility and the, and the water, the wastewater funds, as well as the internal service funds. This exhibit shows that, this exhibit and the next one are required to be on a full accrual basis. In that position, again, the, the equity for these funds are about ten million. I won't go into all these other exhibits, they are lengthy, but I could answer questions either now or, or in the future if you have any. I would like to go to the notes of the financial statements, which start on page forty.
That's four zero?
Four zero. I'd like to talk about the, the summary of, of the fund balances. This shows kind of what everything that the county has restricted or committed or assigned, what they're assigned to and, or what they're assigned for. Again, that's probably something good to, to look at for the future. On note seven, which starts on page fifty-three, we do discuss the debt. And again, this year, the, the county, excuse me, FY twenty-one, the county did do some refunding and, and some, some new debt. On page fifty-four, fifty-five and fifty-six, it kind of goes over the principal and the interest and when everything's due for the governmental fund and the utility funds, when payments are due on, on this debt. Page sixty-two shows when the lease payments are due on, on any lease debt. On page sixty-eight, which is note, or sixty-four, excuse me, which is note eight, we do go over the advanced and, and the current refunding that occurred in FY twenty-one. If you have any questions on those. Page one-ten. We have, there's a note about restatement. Reason why the, there was a restatement has to do with the school board's amount because GASB, which, which governs the, the accounting principles, stated that you have to include school activity funds now inside your financial statements on the school board side. So there is a restatement to show the, the inclusion of the school activity funds.
Can you give us a better definition of school activity funds?
So a lot of times when, when the children have a, a field trip, they give the money to the schools and the schools keep that money and whatever's left over goes into kind of their coffers at, at the school side. So you have to include, like, if the high school has a band prep account, we now have to include those in your financial statements.
So is that the school account or like the band boosters account, the parents?
No, it would not be the parents. So it was at the school side. So let's say if, if, again, Dan had a field trip or they're going to Kings Dominion and there's an amount of money that's paid in, the school then pays out how much it costs to go and they're, they usually keep the rest of it. That goes into a general fund at the school levels. So those are those monies.
So, because I'm looking at four hundred and four thousand dollars. So was that collected or is that what was spent?
No, that's, that's throughout the years how much they have.
Throughout the year?
Throughout all the years. So that's, that's essentially their cash balance.
Like locker fees and?
Exactly. P E uniforms, things like that.
Does anything they, they have a positive balance on goes in that, that fund?
It's also things like teachers who pay a dollar a day for jeans, things, things like that.
Okay.
So what's the one point? One, one, one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and one dollars. What's that?
So what happened to these, custodial funds had to, had to be restated as, as on your financial statements. Usually in the past, the special welfare, the, the floor technology and the escrow funds were actually separate. They were on your financial statements, but they were not included in the governmental side. They were their own separate things and that was another implementation of this GASB. So you had to do both the school activity funds as well as recategorize these items. They were already on your financial statements, but they were on their own separate exhibit. Now they had to be included into your.
Because, so this is new. We've never seen this before.
Right, exactly.
So is there a cash on hand number that, that's in this figure, in, in these figures?
Later on in a, in a financial statements, there were, there, there is, which I'll show you later on.
Okay.
How much there is.
So this is the first year that you rolled this into a, you identified it as a GASB?
Right, it's, it's a new change in accounting.
I'm saying, is that, this the first year?
Yes, this is the first year.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, let's see. We can go to note, note twenty-four, which is right underneath, which talks about the CARES Act funding, how much you have received, as well as the next page, which continues the note, is the ARPA funding, some, some of which you have received as of six thirty, twenty twenty-one, and some that you will be receiving this year. And it does talk a little bit about the, the E S F funding, which is gear funding and funding through, that are, that are going straight to the schools. Again, most of that is on a reimbursement basis and some of it they have already done as of fiscal year twenty-one, but some they have not. I do want to talk about, real quick about the, I'll go back. You have until twenty twenty-six to spend all of the ARPA money. If it's not spent by twenty twenty-six, some of that, whatever isn't spent will have to be returned. Exhibit twelve, which is on page one-twelve. This, this discusses the variance between the budget and the actual for the general fund. The general fund was over budget on revenue by three point five million and under budget on expenses by four point five million, leaving an excess of revenue over expenses of eight million compared to the final budget.
Wait, say that again, please.
So i- if you look on, i- if you look down, that's eight point oh one five million. That is your, your excess of your revenues over your expenditures via your budget. So your budget was better than, or excuse me, your actual was better than your budget by eight million dollars.
But that includes COVID money we used, right?
Exactly.
How much COVID money?
Um, you know, I don't have it off the top of my head. I think it was.
Almost six million.
Yeah.
It's a cumulative number, so it's not, I think this is a bit of a.
But I, that's, that's my point is the, the budget, our actual budget expenditures were less.
Yes.
And our revenue was higher, which is normally what happens. It's never that large. It's usually in the two or three million range or two million range. But because of COVID money, I wanted to kind of subtract that out, I guess.
Exactly. I wanted to know what that plus up was for just federal funds.
I think Mrs. Smith may have that.
I think it's five point something million.
Yeah, so.
She can come up, you can come up. Because this really gives a false sense of, oh, we have all this money and it's really federal dollars. In the mic, please, so we can hear you. There you go. Thank you.
I apologize. So the eight million actually does not include any of the CARES money because this is actually general fund. So this is our actuals versus our budget as far as general fund is concerned. So it does not include any of the CARES money.
But it does, it, it does, what we did, we, we paid for fire and rescue and sheriff's office out of some of that. So this addition, and that's what we're trying to get to the bottom of is, how much did we, did we not spend? Because it's one-time money.
Yes, sir. So on actuals, our actual that we have revenues exceeding expenditures, it is five million, five hundred and eighty thousand, uh, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Of that, we have the estimated increase to taxes for the June payment for the increase in the tax rate. That was one point two million of that. We also had payroll charges that were covered by the CARES funds. And Mr. Sealy, that's what you're speaking of for the public safety.
The whole thing, the whole one?
Yes, sir. That was one point eight million. And then we have reversion funds from the school, which was one point seven eight four million. So that means of the five million, five hundred and eighty thousand, three eighty-seven, if we. So that means of the five million, five hundred eighty thousand, three eighty-seven, if we would not have had those three items. We would only have eight hundred fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Which that also includes the fact that we have some, some projects that we did not do. We have some items that we rolled over as well, within that eight hundred thousand dollars worth of savings.
Can, can I ask you, please, if you would say those numbers again slowly, because I got one point two and one point eight was three and one point seven.
And that one point two is rounded. So let me give you the full thing, Mr. Thomas. So that estimated increase to tax for the June payment is one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand. One hundred sixty-six dollars and twelve cents.
I'm not going to count the cents.
All right. The payroll charge is covered by CARES funding is one million, eight hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars. And some change. And the reversion funds from the school, one million, seven hundred eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. And some change.
He actually came in over budget by only eight hundred thousand dollars, subtracting out all that.
This is, these are actual numbers. So our actual revenues only exceeded our actual expenditures. By eight hundred fifteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars.
And, and the last couple of years, it has been close to two million dollars.
Yes, sir. Last year, our expenditures exceeded our revenues. Two years, the expenditures exceeded the revenues.
The reality of it is, if we had not had the tax increase, we would have exceeded.
Absolutely.
Because it's one point. So the half-year bump in taxes actually saved us from going, so that's really the issue. Maybe Mr. Colly can explain that, because we, we budget by taking money out of the unencumbered balance.
Last year was the worst year we had ever had and we took almost two million. Yeah, so nine hundred and some thousand out of the fund. Normally it's just a balancing number.
Right, right.
And we don't actually go down in fund balance.
That's my point.
But we went down the last two years, last year by nine hundred and the year before by a couple of hundred. So we had taken a million out of the fund balance over a couple of years. That's why I came for the tax increase. Because I could see we couldn't increase expenditures. And that's, that's what that all worked out to. Our expenditures and our revenues were about eleven cents out of kilter. What this all does is this federal money, the reversion money and the tax bump in June, which is all one-time money. All three of those things we won't get again, make that five million dollars.
But there's a couple of points. One, the, the one point is, we actually balance the budget. Based on a number that comes from the unencumbered balance. So, for example, this might not be the right number, but we, we budget by saying we're going to take two million dollars out of the unencumbered balance. That makes our budget balanced. When the year is over, we may end up only using. One point nine million or, or one million of that or less. So the reality is how much is coming out of the unencumbered balance? And you're saying this year, due to that one-time money and the tax increase, we add eight hundred thousand to the unencumbered balance?
We, we, we technically added five point five million dollars to there. But I am saying that only eight hundred of that is true dollars that are not considered one-time money.
Right, right. We're, well, we're saying, we're saying we, we add actually eight hundred thousand dollars. In normal operations, because the other things are, are one-time money.
We basically had more revenue and saved expenditures for about eight hundred thousand. The rest of it's all just one-time thing.
Okay, and can, can I ask him another question before we go on any further? Because I think that's really the, the point. Well, maybe it's two questions. One is on, on page fifty-four, you show the debt numbers or for debt service. And I didn't go back to there, but it, it looks like a fairly constant or consistent number. For quite a few years.
Right.
In the three-point something million range.
Right. Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just need you to say, yes, that was right.
Yes, sir.
Because I think that's a good thing the board needs to understand. And, and the other thing, if you could point out, and this is a very in-depth report and I looked at it before and. It's very detailed. The unencumbered balance for the previous year is listed where in this report?
The unencumbered balance from the previous year is not in the, in this report. It will be in last year's report.
Okay, so the unencumbered balance in this year's report is where? Because this, this, this report is on the county website. And, and anybody that has access to the county website can look at it and I just want them to be able to find it based on what you tell us right now.
So in exhibit one, which is again, your, your accrual basis, it's under your unrestricted.
Okay, which is what page?
What page, yeah. I'm sorry, which would be page fourteen. And then if you're looking for, at the cash basis accrual, which is probably what you're asking for, the unassigned balance is on page seventeen. And it goes over into eighteen, which is twenty-two point nine million.
I don't see that number. On page eighteen?
Yes, sir. It, it goes seventeen, but it really, it goes over to eighteen. There are no, everything else is all zeros, but.
Twenty-two point five four seven is what you're saying?
Twenty-two point nine six three.
Bottom of page eighteen, third set of figures up. So that's the unencumbered balance.
Yes, those are.
Twenty-two, nine, sixty-three, eight oh two?
Yes, sir.
But the point being that basically five million of one-time money went into this.
No, I, I'm, I'm just trying to say what that, what that number is. And then there's a couple of other things that go along with that, is there are some reserve dollars for projects. What is that number?
Well, those, again, those are your assigned, that goes into your, that goes into that note that I was showing you. On note, exhibit one, or note one. Q, which is page forty. That shows what you're restricted, you're committed and you're assigned funds on.
Okay, so what number am I subtracting from twenty-two nine?
None.
There's no restricted, there's a restricted number?
The restricted number is above that number, sir.
Twelve?
Uh, let's go back to exhibit three.
Exhibit three.
Your assigned number is twelve point four nine million. Your committed is one point two million and your, your restricted is five point seven. And your non-disposable, which is sixty-eight thousand, is some prepaid expenses you already have. So twenty-two point nine three is, is unrestricted, totally unrestricted.
And you don't have the last year's?
No, I apologize. I don't have that one.
We, you don't have anything to compare? Do you have it, Mr. Smith? Have you? Can you? It's probably in last year's cap for in the same spot, right?
Right.
Okay. So basically, the bottom line is our, our.
Unencumbered balance.
Unencumbered balance position didn't really change much from last year to this year.
Well, that was what I was trying to get to, is that I don't think the delta is that big.
Less than the tax increase.
The change.
I can say.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand, that's, yeah, that's not really significant when you're talking about the money that's.
It's there.
That's there.
Your, your total fun.
Tax increase might as well say it. One point two of that.
Your total fund balance last year, this, again, this doesn't show what's restricted and what wasn't restricted, was fifteen point three eight million. And now it's, it's forty-two point four million.
No, wait, say that again. I can't be right.
That's, that's your entire, that's your entire fund balance. Right, that does have other things in there. Yeah. Right.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, we're just trying, we're trying to, we're trying to be compares comparative on like figures, not, that's really what we're trying to do.
Unencumbered versus this year versus last year's is what we. With the, with the same items and the same. So it's eight hundred thousand less than whatever it is now. That's probably what it was. I mean, that's fine. I'm good.
Can we roll on to the? Oh, that's true.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Colly? This would also not include, we just had a monster borrowing for utilities, so this would not include that, correct?
Forty-two million, I think that's.
So we're, we're about to, this is about to add forty-two million dollars in debt, correct?
No, we didn't borrow that much, it was thirty, but.
Thirty, yeah.
Yeah, that's in, that's in here, so.
That is in here?
When he's got, when he's talking those big numbers in the forty-two million range, that's got that borrowing in it.
So this, I saw it on Ju- June thirtieth, but I didn't know if we had done that before then or? Is it since June thirtieth? Okay.
We did, we did in spring.
That, that's part of the, that's part of the debt service number he had.
Thirty million, right.
Fifty-four, so we're pretty much stable on the debt number, even with that included. Ms. Smithy had a number?
Um, so for our twenty twenty fiscal year end, our unencumbered number is seventeen million, eighty thousand, nine hundred seventy-one.
Well, that's, that's better, because you had the five point.
And then there's that other five million.
That gives us the number, right, five point one. And like I said, one point two of that is tax, that's where you get the eight hundred thousand difference between what we would have versus. Been in, in, in the tank for it and versus being positive.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the total fund balance with restricted, unassigned, committed, unencumbered, twenty-seven million. Seventy-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven, eighty-seven thousand, right.
Eight forty-five, and that's total fund balance.
Incumbered.
Total. That's restricted, committed, assigned, that's everything.
That's everything.
Yes, so we're going from twenty-seven million to now forty-two million.
Got you. That's the two together, right?
Yes, that's everything together.
Right, okay. Thank you. All right, go ahead, proceeds.
I think I wanted to go to page one fifty-seven. And this is where the school board items come in. Now, I, I don't remember who it was that asked a question about the school activity funds. You can see right on the column, all the way to the right, the second to last column is now the school activity funds. That shows three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in cash. So that's kind of what, what that number was coming from, whoever had the question.
You said one fifty-seven.
Three hundred and forty-seven.
Three hundred.
Page one fifty-seven.
I'm sorry, one fifty-seven.
One fifty-seven.
Page one fifty-seven. Again, these are on a, this is a balance sheet for the schools, it's on a modified cash basis. The school board had about seven million dollars in assets. Again, this doesn't include their fixed assets. And about four million in liabilities, giving them a net of about three million dollars, or net position of about three million. On the bottom of page one fifty-seven, and it's kind of how it, how you, you go from the modified cash basis to the accrual basis, that's on the, the exhibit one. The next exhibit, page one fifty-eight, which is, again, this is kind of their income statement. This does show. You know, the positions at, at all the funds and, and what their, their income was and what their expenses were. Again, this also includes giving back, I think it was one point seven eight million to, to the, to the county. If we can go to exhibit forty-five, which starts on page one sixty, this is just a little bit more detail of, of the school boards and their, their budgets. And what their actuals were, just kind of like how they, how the county has it. Exhibits one forty-six through one forty-eight, which starts on page one sixty-five, this is the Economic Development Authority. These, these are their financial statements. There wasn't much going on besides small business grants with the, with the CARES revenue. Exist, uh, schedules one and two, which start on page one sixty-eight, and again, talk about very detailed, but this is a little bit more of. Detail, if you wanted to drill down and say, you know, how, how did Children's Services Act? How, how was their budget compared to their actual? Uh, schedule one is the revenues and schedule two is the expenditures. So if you ever had questions on that one and drill down, that's where you would go for that. Uh, last thing, I like to, well, two more things. Uh, the stats tables start on page one eighty-four. I won't go into the stats. Most of the stats are done by your staff, but the staff, or the, the stats just kind of show the trends of. Of what's going on in county finance, not only financially, but also some demographic information in there as well. Last section I like to talk about is the compliance section, and that's on page, starts on page two oh five. Um, this is our report on internal controls. We have no findings this year. On page two oh seven is our report on internal controls, which is over your major programs. You had two major programs audited this year, the school food program and the coronavirus relief funds. We had no findings on either one of these programs. On page two oh nine and two oh ten is more of a detail of what your federal expenditures, what your expenditures were that are paid by federal awards. And this was an amount, if you go to page two ten, a total amount of eleven million, three seventy-six oh four. That's your total federal expenditures for fiscal year twenty-one.
That's the total spent or the total in the account?
No, the total.
So expenditures.
Yeah. Page two twelve just again goes over our report and tells you the major programs that we audited. Again, the, the top one is the school food program, has, has a funny name for it, and the, and the bottom one is just coronavirus fund. And again, the next page over two thirteen, we're not reporting any, any questionable costs or any findings. And then page two fourteen, which is the very last page, we're supposed to follow, we're required to follow up on any findings we had in the prior year. And there was one finding due to a school board member not completing a disclosure statement timely. That was fixed in this, this fiscal year. So we're reporting that you have fixed any kind of findings that we had. Last thing I'd like to go over, if you have a management letter. I don't know if you have it, two pages. Yep, okay. Some things that we would, we don't call these findings, but we like to bring this up to the board. Um, so maybe there can be some improvements in the year. Uh, the uniform guidance policy. The, the Office of Management and Budget put out new guidelines for certain policies. And right now, I, I don't believe some of your policies conform to that and Ms. Smith and I and, and have gotten together. And I think there's, there's something in the process of getting these updated for, for when you get grants. They, they kind of look, make sure your policies are updated in line with whatever they say they want them to be. Yes, sir.
How did you rectify the difference in spending when we looked at the. Uh, three hundred thousand dollars that we talked about from schools in, in the audit report?
Well, the school activity funds receive their own audit and that comes from their audit. We do the audit on the school activity funds as well. So the school activity funds now are required to have their own audit, plus are now required to be included.
Included in this one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I guess that's new also.
That, yes, that's new this year. So they've always received an audit, but they've never had to be included in your audits, now that they do. Yeah.
Okay.
More work for us, yes. We do, we were going through the minute books, there were some unsigned minutes. You know, a lot of these, I think when we, when we go over these, we're going to find that they're related probably to COVID more than anything. Maybe they weren't, they weren't signed at the time that we looked at them. On the treasurer's office, which is the next page, they had some outstanding checks on the bank reconciliation that were extending, outstanding greater than one year. There is a, a section in the code where if they're greater than one year, the money is supposed to be sent to unclaimed property. I believe the treasurer was in the process of trying to do that.
These are checks coming from the county to individuals?
Correct.
That are unclaimed by those individuals?
Right, that's.
Over a year old?
Over a year, yes. Uh, next thing, talks about drawdowns of federal funds. When you, when you do some of the, uh, some of the debt, some of that money goes into certain accounts, depending on what kind of debt it is. And then that, that account receives some kind of interest or whatever it may be. And then usually what most counties do is when the debt payment comes to do, they take some of that money out and make the payment with that money. The, the, the county hasn't been drawing those downs, they've been making payments from other funds. Uh, we just recommend to, to do those drawdowns, take that money and, and put it into your general accounts. Some general ledger and, and reporting things that we like to bring up. The accounts receivable, we noted that the general fund didn't really mat, or excuse me. They, all the, all the accounts receivable. the general fund didn't really ma- or, excuse me, they, all the acc- all the, um, accounts receivable were in one account. Usually what localities do is if you have a, you have a local, a state, and a federal accounts receivable account, makes it much easier to audit, we can see how much federal monies do to you, how much state monies do to you. Um, and usually that's how most localities have it, have it reported, so we're just asking that, look into, uh, adjusting your, your general ledger to include three separate accounts receivables instead of one account. Uh, on social services, we did see, again, uh, this may be COVID-related, the supervisor not approving, uh, some of the case action reports to be paid. That's, that's a requirement, um, again, we kind of chalked that up to COVID, and they did state that, you know, people were working from home, so it wasn't so easy to have things approved that way. Uh, the budget, we, we've had difficulty in, in prior years reconciling the budget to, to, uh, on, in the general ledger to, um, other types of documentation where you have made adjustments to budgets. A lot of the times, what, what the problem is, I, I find what the problem is, is the school board is on a different kind of accounting system as a county, which most school, schools do that, but still, makes it difficult to where if there's adjustments in the, in the budget, to make sure that the, both, both the county systems agree to each other. I think that's the biggest problem when it comes to the school board and the county side, and the school board side, just, or, excuse me, in the county side, just ensuring that the budgeted transfers balance, I think in the past, the budgeted transfers haven't balanced, so that's one thing we ask, is just make sure that, you know, prior year end, the actual numbers are fine, but the budgeted numbers did not balance, so just make sure those work. Um.
You said the budget that you, numbers do not balance?
The budget that's in, the numbers that are in the accounting system.
Right.
Yeah, not that they didn't, they didn't balance, it's, the transfers didn't balance with each other. So, you know, if your transfers, um, to, to the VPA fund may not agree from the general, uh, on the VPA.
But our actuals are.
But the actuals are fine.
Okay. Uh, that's a question there.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Sununu, how many counties do you guys audit in Virginia?
Oh, um, Robinson-Farmer Cox probably does eighty percent of them.
Okay.
Me personally, I probably work on thirty or thirty counties.
Do you have many where the county and the schools are on the same accounting system, and those problems are eliminated?
It's probably fifty-fifty, now, the, the biggest reason why a lot of times they're not on the same accounting system, well, two reasons, one, school boards and, and county boards, but the other reason is the Virginia Board of, um, Board of Education requires accounts to look a certain way, and some counties just aren't, um, just decide to go, the school board decides to go with a different county system, make sure that they have it what the Virginia Board of, uh, uh, Education wants to look at.
But you said it's like fifty-fifty of the thirty that you work at are on the same system?
Right, it's about fifty-fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the last thing, uh, I think we, well, two more things, three more things, excuse me, talk about cancellation of individual, um, paid vouchers, sometimes things that were, were voided, uh, they weren't properly voided on there with, with kind of the check number and the date. Again, I think this is more have to do with, with COVID more than anything else. Uh, again, this wasn't a rampant thing either. Um, we do consider updating, uh, written policies to your person, uh, the personnel and travel policies, I guess. We looked at one, uh, travel reimbursement and just didn't really, um, include the, the supporting documentation we would like, usually it's something like a, you know, a printout of, of where you travel, so you know the mileage, that kind of thing. And the last thing that we have on here is consider eliminating, uh, the Walmart and Visa cards, uh, the county's been on, uh, a P-card system, and these cards haven't been used since, uh, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, or twenty sixteen respectively, so it's just best, instead of having it out there, just to, to cancel them. There any questions?
Mr. Forehand? Mr. Black? Mr. Sealy? Ms. Long? Mr. Thomas? No, thank you, Ms. Zunino.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Fincham, redistricting?
If y'all make a motion to accept the audit and, you know, vote on that.
Can't get it.
I move that we accept the audit.
There's a motion to accept the audit, can't get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Forehand? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion is adopted. Mr. Fincham?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Fincham.
Members of the board. Sadler is getting us ready here.
Uh, those are for your review at your leisure, um, we, we'll have, have those up on the screen as well. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, tonight, uh, is our follow-up to, uh, a presentation back in, I think it was November, uh, related to the, the beginning of the redistricting process and, and the challenges that we're facing the county. Um, as you will recall, um, there were some issues with the General Assembly adopting the, uh, new, uh, House and Senate districts, um, which actually delayed the action, uh, of, of the county in terms of, of, of our, meshing our, uh, districts with, with those at the state level. Uh, that, that has now been resolved at the state level, we, we have the new districts, and we have been able to, to, um, uh, evaluate and, and, and prepare some information for, um, the, the board's consideration. Just a brief recap, first couple of slides will be the recap of the, uh, of the November discussion. County is required to use decennial census data every ten years to, to modify the county's election districts. This is commonly referred to as redistricting, and the process affects the, uh, district boundaries for citizen representation on the Board of Supervisors. We're required, obviously, to follow federal, federal and state law, there are standards and guidelines out there related to the, uh, how boundaries are established and identified. Uh, uh, the districts must be contiguous, uh, they must contain, uh, nearly equal populations. Uh, the, the regs do acknowledge that, uh, a plus or minus five percent deviation from the average, uh, is generally, uh, considered acceptable, uh, unless, uh, it can be demonstrated that, uh, that does not meet other, uh, requirements. Boundaries have to identify, uh, uh, follow an identifiable feature, road stream, railroad, um, you, you have to be able to see it on the ground. Again, it has to follow census block boundaries, you can't split a census block that's given to us from the federal government. It has to follow a, a census block boundary, and again, that must be identifiable on the ground. Uh, we have to try to preserve communities of interest, uh, neighborhoods, uh, groups of people in, in a geographic area or, or groups of people with a social, cultural, or economic interest. We have to consider racial and ethnic minorities, uh, districts, uh, are, uh, have to provide, uh, where we can opportunities for racial and ethnic minorities to elect candidates of their choice. And hopefully those districts are compact, um. It's somewhat of a challenge, and, and that's really, uh, ultimately a decision of the board, um, and as we look at our boundaries, uh, you will see some examples where, where we have, uh, tried not to, to change boundaries to avoid the, the argument of, of, of not having compact districts. We've recommended to, uh, minimal changes, uh, to avoid disrupting, uh, polling places, uh, the precincts and, and citizen representatives on the board, uh, except where it's necessary to comply with, with federal or state law. This is the, the map as it currently stands, um, this is based upon the boundaries that were adopted with the two thousand and eleven redistricting and the populations within those districts based on the twenty-twenty census. The new census, um, figures, the county's population is estimated to be thirty thousand eight hundred eighty-seven people. Uh, if you divide that by the six districts, that would give us a new average of roughly five thousand one hundred and forty-eight people. The five percent deviation, uh, allows us to go as low as four thousand eight hundred ninety-one and as high as five thousand four hundred and five. Any numbers beyond that is going to be outside of that five percent deviation, uh, and is going to be problematic, uh, for the county as it goes forward with the adoption of its ordinance. Uh, Bowling Green and Reedy Church presently do not meet even the minimum population requirement of four thousand eight hundred and ninety-one people. So, regardless of what we do, we have to move people into those two districts to at least meet that, that minimum. And as we discussed previously, uh, Madison was, was our, our, our largest population growth in that district, but that's currently estimated to be six thousand and two people. So, obviously, we have to move people out of what is currently Madison District. Um, we have to move at least five hundred ninety-seven, which would get us up to the, the, the maximum deviation of, of, of just over fifty-four hundred people. Uh, we would like to move it, more people out of that district, uh, because we know that district is going to grow over the next ten years. Uh, and as you will see, uh, there is a, a, a recommendation, uh, that would, uh, move approximately, uh, eight hundred people out of, uh, Madison District. Uh, some of the other factors that we, we have to look at, we can't have split precincts, uh, precinct boundaries cannot cross, uh, district boundaries of either, uh, the U.S. Congressional districts, the House of Delegate districts, or the Senate districts. Where we do have to cross a boundary, we have to create a new, uh, uh, precinct and polling place, um, and, and we'll show you that in just a few minutes. We must meet the new Virginia House of Delegate district boundaries, uh, during the, their process, they consolidated the number of con- of delegates, uh, from three to two in Caroline County. Helps us a little bit, we still have some issues to work around. Based upon that boundary, um, it is necessary for us to, uh, create one new precinct, um, 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 to, to address all of the issues, uh, at that level. And that also requires us to identify and secure a new polling place, uh, site for that precinct. This simply shows the, the previous House district boundaries, um, with the current dis- uh, uh, board districts overlaid on that. Um, you could see that, uh, with the three districts, uh, if the state had maintained that, that would have been extremely problematic for, uh, us in our process. Uh, this didn't show up very well, um, this is the, um, the recently adopted House district boundaries, um, where it.
It shows on our screen as well.
Okay, so, so, um, basically the boundary, um, is, is cuts through the county, uh, along the, 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 um, uh, Madupeni River, um, and, and follows the existing boundaries, uh, that were adopted by the Board of Supervisors with your two thousand and eleven, uh, redistricting process. So, we've got two new districts, we've got the, a sixty-six and a sixty-seventh district. The sixty-seventh district is, is the northern and, and eastern district boundary, the sixty-six district is to the south and west. The sixty-seventh district currently comprises the Port Royal and Bowling Green, uh, election districts, which have a combined population of nine thousand six hundred and forty-five people. If you use the minimum five percent deviation, it, those two districts would be required to have, uh, nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-two people. It doesn't do that, so what that tells us is, we're going to have to create a, a, a new polling precinct, we're going to have to cross that sixty-six, sixty-seventh district boundary line, create a new precinct there, and the creation of that new precinct has certain standards. It has to have at least five hundred people, a minimum population threshold of five hundred people, and at least a hundred registered voters. And that, and then we have to, to identify a polling place where people can go to, uh, to vote in that precinct, not only for the, the local Board of Supervisor seat, but for that sixty-seventh district as well. The sixty-six district, again, the south and, and western part of the county comprises, currently comprises four, the remaining four districts, Madupeni, Madison, Reedy Church, and Western Caroline, with about twenty-one thousand two hundred and forty-two county residents. So, if we could simply work within that boundary, uh, the average district size there would be five thousand three hundred, uh, uh, in ten, uh, people, which would meet the plus or five percent deviation. Simply working within that boundary would require significant adjustments, uh, to, to redistribute the excess population from Madison District to the other, uh, three districts, um, within that, that House District. It also potentially adversely affects the minority populations of the Reedy Church and Madupeni District, and would also, I think, exacerbate the compactness issue. That leads us to, to staff's options for, for the board to look at tonight, uh, and, and comment and, and, uh, make recommendations to, to adjust as we go forward. Uh, we, we've actually proposed, uh, three options for the board to, to look at, uh, and again, you can comment on those, you can, uh, propose changes, uh, we're really at the point for board discussion on these. The common element amongst the, the three maps is, one, we have recommended that, uh, the northern part of what is currently Madison District be reallocated to the Port Royal District. And, um, and, and to accept that change would also necessitate, modify, um, Port Royal to give some, uh, population to, uh, the Bowling Green District. The modifications to, uh, the Madupeni and Reedy Church districts really are proposed to be internal, uh, and are designed to give Reedy Church, uh, additional population to meet the, the minimum population requirement. If you look at the, one of the things we've not recommended, uh, is the expansion of the Reedy Church District, uh, further west, uh, towards the Childsburg area. You could do that and make the numbers work, again, as we discussed previously, that could negatively impact the population characters of the Reedy Church District, and I think you have a, a compactness issue there, and that that area of the county really doesn't have anything, um, uh, in common with the rest of, uh, the Reedy Church District. Option two, uh, again, uh, we, we keep the proposed change, uh, in population from, uh, the northern part of Madison District, uh, into Port Royal, uh, creates a, uh, potential new precinct location, uh, at, uh, on six thirty-nine, uh, at the church. Um, and again, the, the changes, um, between the Madupeni and Reedy Church district boundaries, um, are small changes, um, to, to population, um, small percentages to, there was a change there, small changes to, to equalize the population while not changing, significantly changing the, the, uh, uh, the characteristics of the population. I skipped map two. Map two, again, same thing, uh, we, we proposed to, to move about eight hundred people from Madison, uh, into Port Royal, shift some Port Royal population into Bowling. shift some Port Royal population into Bowling Green, um and some um uh internal changes between um the Matupanai and the um Reedy Church districts. So where are we at now? Additional considerations for the board. Uh, obviously, the board is going to want to discuss the options. You may have some additional options that that uh or or changes that you would like to look at. Uh, and certainly, um, we're here to address any questions or comments that the board may have. At some point in time, you're going to need to schedule a public hearing on one or more options that the board chooses to go to public hearing with. And we will need to prepare the the advertisements uh and property advertise uh those options for the board to consider. Uh, your future meeting dates, February 8th, uh, obviously, that's a little bit less than a month from now. Uh, March 8th or a special meeting. Uh, the board, uh, I imagine is going to have some work sessions on the budget between now and then. And certainly, it's the board's option to consider uh having a uh a public hearing at at one of those meetings uh to look at the options that you choose to get to public hearing with. There are some state uh deadlines that that have to be met as as part of the uh shall we say, late adoption of the of the House uh and Senate and Congressional boundaries. Uh, March 31st, the voter registrar does have to submit all changes to the State Board of Elections. So whatever option the board ultimately uh selects as part of its uh redistricting effort, all those changes in the voter rolls have to be submitted to the state by March 31st. There is a June 25th uh primary in Caroline County, which actually backs to the May 6th date, which is the beginning of early voting uh in the county, which actually backs into the March 31st deadline to have any uh voting voter registration changes to the state. That is my uh overview for the board tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions and take uh any further direction from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Mr. Forehand?
Mr. Fincham, um, commercial businesses don't have any impact on this, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, and what's the proper or the desired process to suggest changes to you?
Um, you can um certainly citizens uh uh can can ask us to look at at items. Uh, board members individually or the board as a whole can can ask us to look at changes. Um, and then we can look at those changes and and respond uh as to whether that could be accommodated or not.
Question regarding one of the, all three maps the same for my district, so it's pretty easy to look at any of them, but uh I did have, there was a curiosity. Actually, I I think I just answered my own question. All right, I'll um I'll address it with you later. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy.
Mine all look to be the same no matter what, so no questions. Mrs. Long?
Uh, well, first of all, I need a map that I can compare the differences to as far as the districts go, because they all look the same, uh, because uh I I just need less red and tan and more colors. Color code it for me.
Okay.
Uh, so that would help. Now, um, the suggestions. That that would help me a lot. I do realize the timeline is tight, and we're going to have to advertise for a public hearing. Uh, and I'm fine with doing that, except I don't feel like I know what we would be advertising, because I need time to look at the maps. So do we have time to to set a public hearing at our next meeting and still get it done? I mean, March comes up fast when you only have the meetings.
I think we can get you a colored map and show you the differences, but if you wait two weeks, you're pushing the public hearing to March. And then another public hearing in March, you're 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 going to really cause probably some issues with the registrar having to notify all the people that she has to notify that that change and get the word back to the state. Um, the 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 key point is, because the census tracts are defined by the feds and the people that happen to be in those, it's not little square blocks, it's one random block here and there. You can only make so many adjustments to the map before you run all out of your deviations. Uh, and and so you're basically fiddling with the edges, because the Madison District gained so many people. You've got to shed those people out. You can't push them all the way to Bowling Green, because they don't touch. So you, it's not a lot of changes unless you go to more board members, which I'm not recommending. I mean, if you wholesale change. So if you're going to keep the six districts, you're just kind of around the edges doing, when you've got to work in the whole house issue that we have to. That's why every map almost looks the same. It moves a little bit here or a little bit there. But in the end of the day, they're pretty much all three very similar.
But if we, so I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Interrupt to you. But if if we advertise it for public hearing on the 25th, are we going to be able to get maps that people can easily read? So everybody's going to be concerned about their own district. They're going to want to know where they're going to have to vote and if they're going to have to have new currents. So, uh, I, if we uh go ahead and advertise it, we can't drag our feet on getting maps out and online for people to see, so they can comment on them.
The maps will will be online this week. Uh, we wanted to get to the board first and present it to the board before we we um posted it online, so. Um, but but those will be online this week. Um, and and we we will figure out a way to clean up and 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 highlight the changes.
Maybe do individual districts, so people can see where they are located at within that district and if their district has changed.
Right, or where there's a change in boundaries between districts, those shared boundaries.
Right. Um, so as long as you're sure it's not going to be too much on staff and we can get corrected recommendations and maps out, then I don't see why we couldn't go ahead with advertising the public hearing.
I think I'll, what, I'll come to Ms. Thomas. I think um let's get the comments and then we'll talk about the the maps. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, the um, the the first thing, like like Mrs. Long says, I I would like maps with just districts, because your maps have precincts. So if we could do just color the whole district and give us lines, I think that would be a little easier for us to understand with these three options. And the the other thing, the way the process has worked in the past, is the the board has two or three options that we then go to public hearing with, listen to comments from citizens, and then we make a recommendation then. So I I don't think we necessarily need to rush till next week or next meeting, but February 8th seems like a good time. That'll give us all a chance to to get those maps. And, you know, as we always say, use our own social media platforms to say this is what it's going to be and give folks a chance to look at it, so people can come to a public hearing with, you know, some idea. Um, because I, if we had a public hearing on this at our next meeting, I I don't think anybody would really know where they were or be able to understand where they were. So that's, I I mean, my recommendation is we we do it in February, and we we give maybe all three options. It's it's really not. The other thing is the registrar has to change every voter's district or voter card, because we're all going to 67 and or 66. Yeah. And not what what we've been in before, and we're all changing Congressional District too. So everybody's got to get changed. It's not like, you know, there's a few to be changed. So I I don't think the change thing is an issue. So I'd say at least February, and then we make a decision in February or have another special meeting in February to make it good.
I think that would.
Can I ask clarification? February 8th, are you talking about public hearing on the three options, February 8th?
That's that's what I I would I would think, and and I would charge you and and the GIS folks to make those options clear when you post those on the web and and when you give them back to the board members.
What if we did February 8th? Our next meeting is not till March. We only have one meeting in February, unless we call it a special meeting.
That's what I said.
You know, to do.
I I mean, you could make the decision in February. You could make the decision, you know, at a special meeting where we got together the end of February and said, this is what we're going to do.
Yeah, I I talked to Ms. McVay today. She's looking for every hour she can get to. Yeah. In any way possible, so.
I'm just looking for earlier in February, because the weather that we've had may be indicative of what's coming. So if we start shoot for February 8th, which I think is fine, i- if there's any hiccups, we've got another, we've got another run at. Because if we get snowed out for a public hearing, can we postpone it?
Right.
Well, but uh the folks that work here didn't put us in this. They're the ones that have to suffer all this.
And and I've been, I expressed my concern to Mrs. McVay when she called me today that the state should provide some additional resources to her if they expect her to do this miraculous job.
Should and will is two different things.
Yeah.
So, well, Mr. Fincham, all right, go ahead. I'm going to let you finish. I think you were going to make a statement then.
Yeah, I I was sort of going to say, in 2011, the board advertised two options for public hearings. So we can advertise multiple options. Um, and and as drafted, and I explained, most of those changes, except for the massive population shift in in Madison, are on the fringe. They're minor internal changes, a couple of blocks here, a couple of blocks there. So in terms of changing, modifying the 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 actual bound, the description of the boundaries will not be problematic once we get the first one drafted.
Right.
Um, so when we advertise, we'll advertise the um the legal description of of all of the 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 three, three options for consideration, as well as the maps would show those changes. And and we'll circulate those to the board members and get your blessing before we do that.
And so one other, can I get an answer? Well, one other thing, when you do the maps, I know you're trying to put street names on there. If you could put street names, especially on the boundary lines, that would help a lot.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
So if if I'm understanding correctly, our goal is to look at the redistricting in terms of all three and make a decision hopefully for public hearing by February 8th. Is that correct?
Hold the public hearing.
I I think what I'm hearing.
I'm asking.
Yeah, I think.
Does it hold a public hearing or to? Is that what you?
Yeah.
Okay.
My understanding. My understanding is hold the public hearing on all three options.
Right.
Yes, sir. And then you can select from there.
Right.
Okay.
And you had another option you wanted to.
I I'm good with, I just want to make sure that if there, if in the event there was snow on the 8th, can we, is that give us the ability to just postpone and not have to be set back? Look at the attorney, I know.
Yeah, I think we need to, uh, that's covered, I believe, in your bylaws uh in terms of of inclement weather for for public hearings. So I I'll coordinate with Chris. The the earliest you could then have it, I think, would be your March.
Review and bylaw, I didn't see anything, but you can double check that in FOIA and, because they've changed FOIA recently too. Um, but I know the planning had this issue, and I think we might have changed their rules of order, but I don't know if it's in yours, so I can check, look back. But if it's not in there, if it doesn't permit it, you'd have to do two weeks.
Yeah, but there is an option in the bylaws that says the board has the ability to change any of the bylaws.
And the bylaws.
Right, so we'd be okay if we went, if we went from the 8th to.
As long as we can plow the board, yeah.
Yeah.
While we're talking about this this evening, I just, after this last event, if it would have been a couple of days later, we wouldn't be here tonight, so. God, it's all right. I I'm good with the 7th, Mr. Chair, or the 8th, our our first board being in February for a public hearing.
Well, I'll ask for consensus for, so so our goal is to have the public hearing on February 8th. Um, and we would be presenting all three districts at that time for um as options.
Yes, sir.
If I can get, I don't think I need a motion. I think we just need to set that. Is that correct? Mr. Cup, yeah, we just need a consensus. Is that the wish of the board, that we do that? Mr. Forehand? Mr. Black? Mr. Sealy?
Yeah.
Ms. Long?
I think we should do the 25th, but that's okay.
Do you think we should do the 25th?
Yep.
Yeah, we we can advertise 4 to 25th. It would be too close, so we have to go to the 8th as early as we could advertise.
Mr. Thomas? And I'd agree with, we'll, it'll be the 8th for public hearing. All three districts. Thank you. Agenda item number three are appointments. Uh, the Recreation Advisory Committee for Madison, Mr. Forehand?
I don't have that one, but I have my broadband.
Okay. Um, can you?
Like to nominate Stefan Levisk.
Stefan Levinsky?
No, Blubiske.
Leviske.
It's hard to pronounce.
Okay, it's all right.
I'm not, I might not even be doing it justice.
Okay. Also, we have the board, uh, zoning appeals, Port Royal, Western, and Madden. Can can we second that one first? I'll go and do all of them and then, oh, okay. Mr.'s objection.
I I would like the uh staff to reach out to my nominee to see if he's interested.
Yeah, the same. I've reached out to mine, but I've not heard back on that one.
Well, okay, why don't we just do do all three at the next meeting? Don't that, those three for the uh Board of Zoning Appeals, we'll just hold that one and do the next one. And for you, Mr. Black, Western Caroline, Building Code.
Yep, I do have one for this one. I'd like to nominate, uh, renominate Kevin McGuire for the uh Building Code Board of Appeals.
Kevin McGuire, all right. All right, so there is um agreement that Mr. Forehand would like to nominate for the Recreation Advisory, I'm, excuse me, for the Broadband Committee, Mr. Stephen Leviski?
Stefan Levisk.
Stefan Leviski. We will not appoint um anyone for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We'll do it at the next meeting. And Building Code for Western Caroline is Mr. McKay, is that right?
Mr. Mc, uh, for the Building Code Board of Appeals, Kevin McGuire.
Kevin McGuire. I can't read my own writing. Kevin McGuire. Can I get a second on both?
How second both of those?
There's a motion and a proper second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, you'll make the proper communicate with yours as well. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For Ms. Long's benefit, it's my understanding that the uh BZA member for Port Royal does not wish to be reappointed.
Okay. So we're looking at uh three persons for BZA next uh, next meeting.
Mr. Fincham, did you get any feedback regarding my appointee?
Um, no, sir, I will check.
All right.
Uh, Bizzek had actually reached out, um, um, and and I'll check with her.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham.
Well, hopefully, somebody in my district's listening and will contact me because they're just didn't serve on BZA.
Next is the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as uh
amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that we approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, you guys want a real break before we go into public hearing here? All right, we're going to take a Yeah, 15-minute break. We'll come back at 8:03, and we'll start with a public comment. But we are in recess. We will reconvene the January eleventh twenty twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting for Caroline County. It is now time for public comment. Public comment is a period where citizens have the opportunity to speak to the board about any concerns that they have within the county. The remarks that you make should address the board and not any staff member or any single board member. Your comment should be held to three minutes. Okay. Good, good evening.
Good evening, I'm Ray Siebel in sixty-three oh four French Lane, Port Royal District. On August twenty-sixth, I attended a meeting of the Planning Commission to observe, uh, you know, how they operated. And when I left, I was so confused and very concerned, I went in and requested a copy of what their charter was or what their duties were. And Mr. Finch was nice and sent me chapter thirteen on the Planning Commission. And after reviewing this, I was even more confused. I had asked him to provide each of you a copy, I don't know if he did or not. But anyhow, if you look down through here, at one point, it indicates that the commission will be consist of six members and then it goes out to say it'll be consisted of five members. That was a little bit.
No, wait a minute, so can you repeat that for me?
Yeah. It indicates in here that the commission would consist of six members.
Correct.
And then it goes on down further and it says the commission shall consist of five members. With one member representing each district. Well, they, they need to correct that.
Absolutely.
Six or five.
It's six.
Five?
It's six, that's probably a typo.
Well, it might be a typo. Well, it might be a typo, but they talked the whole thing. And then it goes out, talks about powers and duties. But it's prescribed by law, but it doesn't identify what laws. And, and in there, the ADA needs to be included as one of them. You know, anytime the county is spending money for somebody to do something for the county, they need to describe specifically what they want that person to do. If you have assigned a decorating committee, you need to identify, are we going to decorate a parking lot or a gymnasium or what it's going to be? Just like the planning commission, they should specify what the commission, what their duties are. I've listed a few they should be charged with reviewing and making recommendations on all development proposals. And if the commission doesn't see, doesn't, doesn't come, uh, if the commission, uh, should be charged with making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. There's no point in having a commission if they're just going to roll it over and throw it back to the supervisors. I mean, basically, the commission is your feet on the ground and should come back and make either recommendation to approve or disapprove based on their research and going up and, and look at the site and interview people.
Mr. Shiebel, can you, Shiebel, can you finish in thirty seconds?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment period? If he does, I'll stop him.
Good evening. How are you all tonight?
Good evening, sir.
My name's Nathan Sullivan. I live at sixty-three thirty-seven Quarters Road.
We don't need your address, just voting district, that's all.
Um, we're in the Port Royal District.
Thank you.
And this is concerning the Racehorse Solar Project.
No, no, that, that's public hearing.
Okay, what are we?
This is public comment.
Right.
You can talk about anything other than what's on the.
Yeah, we'll get you back up here in just a minute.
You, you're a little early.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Under public, public hearing, you can come back.
Okay.
This is, uh, public comment.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing no one coming forth, public, uh, comment is, period is closed. Right. Now our public hearings. We have, uh, one tonight, I believe, a special exception zero five twenty twenty-one. Racehorse Solar LLC is the applicant. Mr. Fincham?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your, uh, one public hearing tonight, SPEX zero five dash twenty twenty-one. John Berberich, owner, Racehorse Solar LLC applicant, requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article seventeen, section thirteen, and Article four, section five point forty of the, uh, Caroline County zoning ordinance on tax map thirty-nine dash A dash ten, thirty-nine A dash twelve, consisting of a hundred and forty-five point nine acres more or less. The, um, proposal is for a solar energy facility of approximately, uh, twelve megawatts. Um, it's located in the, uh, Port Royal, uh, voting district, uh, off of Route one, um, near, uh, and Route six thirty-two, which is Quarters Road. The applicant is requesting a special exception approval for a minor solar energy facility to be located on Route six thirty-two, Quarters Road in the Port Royal District. The planning commission, uh, actually forwarded this to the recommendation, uh, to the Board of Supervisors with no recommendation, uh, on a two-two tie. The applicant, Racehorse Solar, is requesting a special exception permit for a minor solar energy facility in accordance with Article four, section five point forty of the ordinance. It would be located on two parcels of land off of Quarters Road, approximately one point five miles, uh, west of US Route one. The project utilizes approximately fifty-three acres of a hundred and forty-five acres total. And the facility would provide up to twelve megawatts of, of renewed, renewable energy, uh, connecting to Rappahannock Electric Cooperative Grid. Um, the GDP narrative and other application materials are included in a, attachment A. As part of the special exception process, uh, the application is submitted to, uh, all of the departments and, and agencies that are involved in the development re, review process, which included VDOT, Fire and Rescue, uh, as well as, uh, internally in the planning department. Um, and the comments from those agencies, uh, have, either have been addressed or will be addressed at, at the site plan, uh, or with conditions recommended in the special exception permit. The comprehensive plan identifies this area as rural preservation, and the subject property is zoned rural preservation, consistent with the comprehensive plan. The rural preservation district does allow minor solar energy, uh, facilities by special exception permit. Planning Commission held its public hearing for the special exception at its August twenty-sixth meeting. There were three speakers in opposition to the request at that time. And planning commission deferred action several times to conduct the site visit and, and to allow staff the opportunity to prepare suggestive consi, uh, conditions for consideration. The commission forwarded this request to the board with no recommendation as a result of a tie vote at its October fourteenth meeting. The minutes are included under attachment C. In your staff report, there are a number of, of, uh, con, of standards, both, uh, standard, special exception standards as well as the standards for minor solar energy facilities. The applicant appears, the application also appears to meet the, uh, additional submission requirements that are set forth in the zoning ordinance. Article seventeen, section thirteen E allows the Board of Supervisors to, uh, establish conditions, uh, in granting a special exception permit, uh, that are necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Uh, there are a number of suggested conditions included in the staff report for your consideration, um, uh, as you go forward and, and consider this application. With that, I'll address any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Board members, uh, Mr. Mr. Black?
Mr. Fincham, before we get started with this, I just have one quick question. What is our definition for the people to know the difference between minor and major? What, what's the cutoff?
Uh, twenty megawatts.
Twenty is.
Less than twenty is, uh, minor, uh, and greater than twenty is a major, which would be subject to the overlay district.
Thank you.
Can I ask him to clarify that?
Mr. Thomas? Can I ask Mr. Fincham to clarify that twenty megawatts is?
Is, is.
Is minor in terms of area? Acre, two acres?
The area is really a function of the number of solar panels. Uh, but typically, a larger or a major project will have much larger area devoted to solar panels and subject to the special exception application than a minor.
But I mean, like a ballpark, just, just so we can get an idea, an acre would still be a minor, ten acres would still be a minor?
Yeah, typically, the standard, the, the, the average we hear is anywhere between, between seven and twelve acres per megawatt.
Yep.
Okay.
That's, Mr. Thomas, they told us at the Aveco Conference that it was ten acres equals one megawatt. That was this, Dominion Energy gave a presentation, and they said it was about ten acres equals one megawatt.
So then we're talking, for ten megawatts, we're talking a hundred acres? Okay.
In theory, yes, sir.
Just, just, just wanted to ballpark to make sure we all on. Mr. Foreman, you have a question?
This is twelve megawatt, if I remember correctly?
Yes, the application is for twelve.
Yeah, with fifty-some acres, so take that with. Uh, anyway, that's, um, I didn't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Sealy?
None at this time.
Mrs. Long?
Well, I will say it's a hundred and forty-five acres with fifty-five acres for panels. So maybe they include all the roadways and stuff for that ten acres. I don't, I have no idea how they came up with that figure. Um, there is no straight topography map in the board packet, except for the map that is covered with where the panels are supposed to be. If I remember correctly, this piece of property is sort of shaped like a bowl. Doesn't it sort of like that?
Um.
Which leads me to the fact that I need a site visit?
Yes, because your memory is in question.
Because you're entertaining too.
Um, uh, a- as you drive west from Route one, you have property on the north side of Quarters, and you have some property on the south side. Property on the north side, as you approach the property, um, the ditch is actually slightly elevated from the road. So from the road itself, the land sits up a little bit higher. As you continue west and, um, and that flattens out the further west you go on Quarters Road. When you get to the property on the south side, the property on the south side actually sits below, um, Quarters Road in terms of visibility. Um, so you have land that, that both is below, from a visibility perspective, below the road, some that's above the road, and, and then flattens out to be roughly level. So it's kind of a mixed bag.
Seems like that's going to provide quite a bit of a screening challenge.
It will require significant screening, yes, ma'am.
That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Thomas? All right, is the applicant here this evening? Would you like to speak before I open public comment? The public hearing, excuse me. I'm, I did, I think. I didn't? I thought I did. Excuse, excuse, let me open up the public hearing. I thought I opened it up. Did I? No. I thought I did. Oh, XPX. Anyway. Pub, the public hearing on S, SPX zero five twenty twenty-one, Racehorse Solar, uh, the public hearing is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to speak regarding this matter. Yeah. Right, that's what I thought. He speaks first, and then we do it. Yeah. First, right. Okay. It's open, right? That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I, I do have some, uh, materials I'd like to disseminate, actually specific to screening, um, I would be okay?
Mr. President. Yeah, I thought I opened it up. No, just for him. Didn't, didn't open it.
He stopped.
Correct. We did not open it for the public. Opened it, right. Correct. I usually open this naked. That's all. Y'all confuse me. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. If you would state your name and voting district, if you're in the county.
Sure, my name is Seth Mon. I, I'm not a, a resident of the county.
Thank you.
Representative Solinesco, um, we are, are here to present the Racehorse Solar Projects. Um, I believe you're roughly familiar with Solinesco. I was here last month presenting our Whalebone project. They've also been on and off involved with the county since twenty sixteen, when we, uh, generated this project initially. You guys may remember me from back then as well. Um, uh, similar to the Whalebone project that I presented last month, uh, this is a, uh, minor project, uh, and, uh, meaning it's a distribution level project from our perspective, and it's a little larger than Whalebone, of course. Our expected fenced-in acreage at this point is just under fifty acres. Uh, to maybe elaborate on some of the confusion a moment ago, the, the ten acres that you hear a lot going around the industry is how much land we look to get under site control, which then we assess to figure out how much is actually usable. So that fifty-five number would be what we think is usable out of this hundred and forty-five acres. Uh, so twelve megawatts in the roads and fencing will fit within that fifty-five acre footprint. The rest won't be developed. So the, the ten acres is, you know, kind of close here with the twelve megawatts out of a hundred and forty-five acres. Hopefully that helps clarify that a little bit, but the fifty-five acres is the area that we're looking for permission to develop within. Our current site plan has, has, uh, all the equipment enclosed within a forty-eight acre fence line. Uh, much like Whalebone, we are in late-stage negotiations with, uh, ODEC on behalf of REC. Uh, if this project's built, it will be, uh, to the benefit of the local repair and be put into the local utilities' energy mix. Uh, just a couple of general things, you know, like to point out that this is one step in the permitting process from our perspective. We still have to go through, uh, the DEQ's PBR processes, which is where they, uh, look after environmental and, uh, store resources. Um, much like the zoning process, this process includes an advertised public comment period where the public can weigh in if they have concerns over environmental aspects. We have a, a member of our environmental engineer team here who can speak to any questions on that. Uh, additionally, we get a lot of questions about erosion control, water runoff on these sites. There are processes both through the county and through the state for these pertaining to water runoff, uh, mitigation during the construction and operations of this project. Uh, those are required steps that we'll go through. We're, of course, happy to elaborate on how these processes work. Again, we have our consultant here who's, who's really well versed on that. And then finally, we always get questions about decommissioning. I like to make clear off the top, especially here in Caroline, where you guys just, uh, enacted your new ordinance. It's very robust when it comes to expectations around decommissioning. We're happy to abide by them. They're, they're fairly, fairly standard in the industry. Uh, uh, you know, they include a detailed decommissioning plan submitted prior to construction for approval to the county. Uh, along with that plan is a third party, a third-party, uh, cost estimate, uh, uh, that also must be approved by the county. And then the, the builder has to put forth, uh, or the project owner should say, has to put forth, um, uh, financial surety such that if there was an unforeseen circumstance where, where, uh, the field were abandoned, which is highly unlikely, given the upfront investment nature of these investments. Uh, but if that did happen, the county would have, uh, means to self-cure the problem using funds provided by the project. So there virtually no chance that the, the county or its taxpayers would be left responsible for this project, uh, decommissioning. Also, the, 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 uh, conditions and, and the ordinance makes it clear when a project must be decommissioned. So you can't have a project that's sitting there not producing electricity. And, and you know, the owner says, well, we'll get to that in five years. If it's not producing, they must decommission. If they don't, the county has their funds to do so. So very clear terms on which this project will be and can be decommissioned. And, uh, just like to lay that out, because we do get a lot of questions about, you know, solar panels laying to waste in these fields. And want to make it clear to the community and, and to the board that that's been well thought of. Diving into the, the details of this project, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking, we're looking for permission to develop within a fifty-five acre, uh, uh, what we call development envelope within that hundred and forty-eight acres. So we certainly aren't developing anywhere near the hundred, the full hundred and forty-eight acres. Uh, this includes, you know, uh, adherence to, to proper setbacks around wetlands and other sensitive environmental areas, uh, such as steep slopes. Uh, in addition to the, the setbacks that are outlined, uh, from, from rights of way and also from neighboring properties. In this case, the, the neighboring property setbacks are, are for most part, uh, well in excess of, of the, the county standards just because there's, you know, wetlands and other environmental features that just mean that we have to step away back, as you can kind of see in the placement of those development envelopes. Um, further on, in our general development plan, you can see a little more details. you can see a little more details on on sort of our preliminary preliminary layout. That's that sort of fenced-in forty-eight acres that we're estimating at this point, uh, including, uh, you know, what a what a twelve-megawatt, uh, project would look like in terms of panels and rows, uh, fencing, roads, inverter pads, all that jazz. More importantly perhaps, that this shows sort of our minimal buffer commitments at this point within those setbacks. You know, we certainly understand that there's a lot of residences in the vicinity of this project. As such, w- we're committed to ensuring that we're using our property in a way that doesn't encroach on the neighbors' ability to enjoy their own property. To us, that means that we need to make sure that the neighbors aren't looking at solar panels from their property. And we understand that. To achieve this, we've we've established minimum buffer commitments that are robust uh, and in excess of of the county's minimums. A big part of, uh, the those equipments rely on existing vegetation. It's hard to see the existing vegetation, obviously, in a black and white, uh, preliminary site plan or general development plan, I should say. But I wanted to include these shots where you can see the property boundary in addition to the development envelope, i.e. the extent, uh, to which, uh, equipment may be placed. Uh, for majority of this project, uh, we, the the development envelope is set back well in excess of of the, uh, of the prescribed setbacks just because of wetlands and other environmental features. And those areas are full of existing mature vegetation. Uh, we are very confident that, you know, neighbors to the north and largely to the east will have no opportunity to see, uh, this project from their property. There's plenty of existing mature forests in those areas and and increased setbacks, uh, make it, you know, virtually impossible that that their viewscape will change at all. Of course, uh, the story is a little bit different along Quarters Road, and that's this project's biggest challenge. And that's where we really focus a lot of our attention, uh, when it comes to buffering and ensuring that the neighbors aren't aren't looking at panels. Our our plan for this area, you know, includes a hundred and fifty-foot setback prescribed by the county from rights-of-way. That's, you know, quite a bit more robust than a lot of counties. And it really, uh, bodes well for our ability to to, uh, shield this project visually. There's a good shot of the of the the field if you want to think about what the contours look like. You know, that part's kind of elevated from the perspective of the homes across the street, which we think helps, uh, in our efforts to buffer. Uh, you know, a a relatively low shrub put at the edge will, uh, uh, really obscure a lot of visibility. Of course, we're going to do more than just shrubs, but just for example. What we're committing to today is, uh, two rows plantings at the game of construction, uh, staggered evergreens, um, six-foot up planting, uh, spaced twelve feet on center each row. Uh, and we've done some renderings here to show what that would look like. Here is the panels offset the hundred and fifty feet, uh, with looking from the south end of the property with trees. This is at installation, what it would look like. This is at the three-year mark, which is the standard outlined in your ordinance as to when it needs to be obscured. And, uh, from there, it only gets, uh, better. Moving on to a d- a different view where you're looking more particular at these panels, here's here is the site as as it exists today. You can see the existing, uh, uh, power lines running through the site. This is what it'll look like at install, three years, five years. Couple of notes I want to, I want to just put out there on these renderings. One is that the, our previous general development plan, the one that's in your packet, said four foot up planting, fifteen foot on center. This week, we got these renderings back with that plan. And we had to have a bit of an emergency meeting because we realized that that plan didn't, uh, uphold our commitments to the neighbors as we wanted it to as far as obscuring the panels. And we've, uh, as such, we've, 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 uh, enhanced that plan to larger trees at planting and closer together to ensure that at that three-year mark, we're obscuring it just with our plantings. And that brings me, uh, to my next point, which is part of our plan is not only these immediate plantings to mitigate the immediate view, but, uh, a a plan for the life of the project that includes a full hundred-foot strip that we're calling a buffer area, which is in excess of the seventy-five acquired by the county, in which we're committing to not removing vegetation unless it endangers our neighbor property for the life of the project. Uh, we didn't show that on here frankly because it's kind of hard to show what might grow there on its own through natural vegetation cycles. Uh, but the idea is we wanted to be able to demonstrate that the plantings alone were sufficient to to buffer the site. And we're also committing to enhancing that with natural vegetation for the life of the project. The idea being that that will become the dominant screening, uh, uh, mechanism, uh, for for most of the life of this project. And from the perspective of an outside viewer, this this site will look like a a forested parcel, much as many of the neighbors do in the area. Finally, unlike other county, Caroline, as it does with decommissioning, requires financial surety put in place to ensure that the buffer commitments made by the applicant are actually coming to fruition. Most counties don't have this. It's a great tool you guys have to, uh, you know, if if three years from now it's not obscured, you can ask us to come back and do better or use our own money to to, uh, update the buffers. That's that's a great tool that you have that most counties do not, that hopefully provides additional assurance at this time. Want to know a little bit of history of collaboration with the neighbors. Uh, when we initially applied, we we, uh, sent letters to all the adjacent landowners inviting them to the community meeting to learn about this project and also provide our contact information, inviting them to reach out if they had any questions. Uh, we do this with every project we do. We often have very fruitful meetings. In this case, no neighbor showed up to our meeting. We were a little surprised by that. We did get three phone calls or emails asking questions about the project. Those people either expressed no opinion or or expressed support for the project. When it came to the planning commission, uh, you, there were a number of of comments and and concerns made about this project, uh, primarily through written means, but a few people spoke as well. Uh, those letters from the planning commission are are included still in the board packet. But I do want to quickly talk about how we've addressed some of those concerns since then. Those concerns generally fall into two buckets. One being things that can be addressed with with more information or corrected information in a lot of circumstances. And the other is concerns over visibility of the project. Uh, we sent around after that meeting a frequently asked question brochure that, uh, uh, gave more information on the environmental permitting processes uh, and also corrected a lot of misinformation that was circulating in the neighborhood pertaining to decommissioning commitments and also, uh, who is going to be purchasing this this electricity. Additionally, we reached out to anyone who wrote a letter, uh, and and had the opportunity to walk a lot of sites along with neighbors. Uh, that helped us greatly in updating our general development plan uh, to the one you have today, which is, it has changed a lot since we we were in front of the planning commission. We fully spoke, expect that, you know, there's going to be folks on hand to speak tonight. But would like to point out that the letters in your packet were written before the planning commission hearing, before those meetings, before those that follow-up and before we made considerable changes to our general development plan since then. Uh, the the letters that are in your packet are either positive, which we're really happy about, or, uh, just generally anti-solar and kind of agnostic to the details of this project. I'd also, you know, before moving on, I want to just restate to the neighbors and to the community that we still feel like we're really in this process and are happy to continue to collaborate. If if there's room for, uh, making this project more perfect and making the community more comfortable, we'd certainly like to get there. Moving on from the immediate neighbors to the broader community, just quickly wanted to touch on, uh, some of the positive impacts that this project can bring to the to the county, uh, including tax revenue. I've included, uh, our our estimates in our workup on that as part of the application packet. In addition, unlike a lot of other projects, we can say that this project will be used locally and to the benefit of the local ratepayer. That's something that we're really proud of with this project and our racehorse project. Uh, and unlike other development types that might bring in tax revenue, this really has little to no impact on county resources. You know, don't require schools or or, uh, utilities or anything like that. I do have a few requests and condition amendments. Whenever you guys do feel ready to vote on this project, largely they're in line with the requests I made on the other project. I do want to point out that I've revised the the GDP just to make the updates to our buffer commitments, simply changing four feet to six feet and twelve feet on center, or fifteen feet feet on center to twelve. That's the one I just handed out to you. So if and when you're ready to vote on it, just urge you to make sure that's the the version you're voting on to make sure you're capturing our enhanced commitment there. Uh, other than that, we, forty years seems a little arbitrary. We think this could be a fifty-year project. Uh, and, you know, investors are concerned they might have a stranded asset if they don't have the ability to go beyond, uh, forty years. Uh, for example, this project's sister project, Louisa, has a fifty-year CUP. Uh, and we'd ask for the same thing here. And then finally, we have the ongoing question about, uh, uh, water quality BMPs versus other means that are more generally used in these projects. We know there's some uncertainty that needs to be resolved here. But we ask that we don't get pigeonholed into a very expensive measure that may not be necessary and might end up, you know, upending this and other projects for for financial reasons. We'd like to be able to maintain discussions with the county on that. And our environmental engineer can speak further to that issue if needed. And and that's all I have for now. Sorry, I went a little bit over. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone like to speak?
Mr. Saul?
Yeah.
I am Ray Shabel. I live on Trent Lane. I'm in the Port Royal District.
Thank you, sir.
A cornfield the size of the Racehorse Project removes forty-eight million pounds of carbon dioxide from the air each year. Solar panels remove none. The cornfield produces enough oxygen for roughly four hundred thousand people. The solar panels produce none. Are you willing to trade the food off of your plate and the oxygen that you breathe for solar panels? If not, you should deny this request. Another concern that I have is basically he showed you this great buffer buffer area along Quarters Road. That's going to grow into be a natural snow fence, causing Quarters Road to be bow- snowbound during the winter months. As the snow, as the wind blows across that field, it's going to pile up on the Quarters Road. We have enough problems on there now. Also, the federal government thought that the protection of farmland from non-agricultural uses is so important that they passed the Federal Farmland Protection Act. If the federal government thought it's important enough to pass a protection act, Caroline County should think it is important enough to prohibit non-agricultural uses and save the farmland. And remember, only you can save the farmland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
I'm back again.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Nathan Sullivan. I live at six to three thirty-seven Quarters Road, Port Royal District, and I'm adjacent to the Racehorse Solar Plant. Uh, first of all, let's call these what they are. They're industrial solar facilities. They are not solar farms. There ain't nothing about a farm to them. I don't know if y'all got it in your packet or not, um, but I have forty-seven signatures of people directly affected by the project on this petition right here, and they all say please vote no. If you'd like, I don't know, do y'all have this petition in your packet?
Yes, we do.
If you would please read that. Uh, petition on the matter concerning Racehorse Solar Project on Quarter Road. We, the undersigned citizens of Caroline County, agree we do not want a solar plant to be constructed on Quarters Road. We feel our rural preservation zone neighborhood is not the appropriate place for the erection of a solar panel facility. We choose to live here because we all love the country life, the rural landscape and scenery, as well as the abundant wildlife living in this area. None of us want our bucolic views to be blocked by a field of solar panels surrounded by an eight-foot chain-link fence. It would be a terrible transformation of our beautiful neighborhood. Building this electrical facility would be a mistake that could not be undone. It would not be possible to return this land to its original condition. We strongly feel it would be of no benefit to residents of Caroline County, and we vote no to rezoning our rural preservation. And that's about all I've got to say about it. Forty-seven signatures on here say please vote no. That's all I can I can say for y'all. And I I hope you see that this is probably not a good thing down the road for the county. I got a feeling these projects do not stand alone on their own merits. And without government subsidies and grants, they will go the way of the Keystone Pipeline. If we have another administration in here that says we're going back to petroleum, not solar, one signature, and these solar plants are in the toilet, and the Caroline County is going to be stuck with, uh, a lot of liability removing these things. And the owners are going to be stuck with a bunch of junk and tore-up property. And that's my main concern is that they do not fit a regular business model. And I don't believe they stand alone without the government grants, loans, and tax relief. So that would be my consideration is not just how this is going to look out my window. But as I've done more research on this, I think the whole thing is really not a good idea. Not just in our county, not just Racehorse, but in the whole country. And you'll find it up north where a lot of these things have been going on for a long time that a lot of them are going bankrupt because they're not a viable, there's no way that thing can make enough money to pay all the output. That they're talking about paying for rent, upkeep. Who's going to take care of this thing if a big hailstorm comes through there and beats the bejesus out of it and leaves this stuff all over the ground?
Can you please wrap up in thirty seconds?
Yes, sir, I'm finished. I just hope y'all will sway on the, uh, side of common sense. And don't be swayed by the money that they say is going to come in for this because it only benefits three entities. The solar company, the landowner, and the county gets a tax benefit because it's going to be industrial rate instead of rural residential. So, and you're, I hope y'all can consider this. And I would hope that you vote no. And the forty-seven people on this petition also hope you vote no. I don't think solar is good for the county or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Hodge. I live in, I reside in Woodford, Port Royal District. Um, I've been working in the hospital and I'm exhausted and working with COVID patients all day. But this subject is important enough for me to, uh, make my, uh, show up here tonight and make my comments heard. Um, there's something about these solar proposals in our county to tie up vast acreages of land, um, that I cannot put my finger on, but they just do not seem right for many reasons. From one, no one knew, um, knew anything about the solar overlay district, which has been in the works for how long? I know it's been more than a few months since May. A year, two years, it sounds like it's been since ninety-six, um, five years. I think my property lies within this. I am vehemently opposed to, uh, land acquisition for solar power. It is wasteful, inefficient, and politically and monetarily rather than conservatively driven. The farm in question is in a populated area. Almost fifty residents signed a petition in opposition to it. The Sullivans own the adjoining property. They would have to have, um, the panels in their view every time they looked out the window. Um, given the setting of cropland, woodland, I do not think it's suitable. It's rural preservation. The land is more suitable. It it it, um... It's rural preservation. The land is more suitable. It 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 um, yields more in cropland and forest land um, than people having internet access so they can watch Netflix with, you know, with the electricity. Um, and the gentleman is talking about the buffer. Well, twenty five foot is almost from here to to those chairs there. That's not very much screening if I have to look at that, and those little arborvitaries, that's not very much screening to um, hide those panels behind a fence. And when you look at, think of your lot, if you have a one acre lot, um, and if you had to have panels on and all that, what if your lot was ten acres, now fifty acres, a hundred acres? All that land covered in solar panels. Um, I just think it's a travesty, and I don't think it's a good production of electricity. Um, I just please beg you to not approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there? I'll, you you get, you get, we'll let people speak, then I'll come back to you, okay? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Alright, you can come forward. Yeah. You want, you wanna? Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Uh, just wanted to respond to a couple of the points that were made.
Yeah, that.
The, you know, the points meandered a bit, you know, a lot of them were kind of just general anti-solar that didn't really uh, uh, discuss any of the details of this project, but you know, a lot of those political arguments uh, about a signature undoing these projects, I I don't know, I, it doesn't really have any bearing in reality. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, these projects are are heavily weighted upfront with investment uh, uh, by the owners, and uh, they are economic, uh, okay, economically sound, not based on grants or or some sort of subsidy that is going to dissipate, and then these projects don't have owners anymore. I just don't really follow that political kind of uh, argument against these, but wanna make clear that they're these projects make sense economically. That's why they're being built. That's why, that's why they're they're popping up all over Virginia. Virginia has no uh, renewable, renewable portfolio standard or any sort of uh, you know, thing that you might see out in California or something to to prop these up, doesn't need it anymore. The the cost to build these things has come to a point where we can produce energy that competes in an open market, and that's why they're here. There were a number of other comments. Uh, we are aware that there's petition forty seven signatures. We're we're acutely aware of it. We've, we've reached out to many of the neighbors ourselves. We've, we've broken down that petition to figure out where these signatures are coming from. They do represent, I believe, a little under half of the adjacent landowners. Um, we've spoken with many of the other landowners. I think you have letters from some of them to support this project. Um, many of the signatures are from the same household, so uh, uh, many of them are from elsewhere in the county. Many of, at least one of them is from Spotsylvania County, it appears. Um, not to say that that folks in other parts of the county don't have a say in this project. They certainly do. It is in their county and and they are wealth and their rights to weigh in on this project, but I don't want the impression to be out that the neighbors are unanimously against this project. They are not. That petition represents maybe half of them. The other ones, we've spoken with a lot of them, and I think you have letters from a lot of them. There were arguments made about the environmental attributes of of farmland versus solar. Argument was made that it has no environmentally positive effects on air quality. I I don't know where those stats came from. I certainly uh, uh, would argue that envi- uh, uh, solar energy and renewable energy uh, does have positive environmental attributes. I won't compare one to the other, but I just would really question that line of reasoning. There, there seemed to be implication that we were forcefully acquiring farmland. Uh, we are, we're proposing this site uh, on a piece of land that is owned by someone who currently uses for farming and now wants to use it for some, for something else. I believe that's a landowner's right. Uh, if he doesn't wanna keep farming the land and wants to use it for this purpose, um, I I would just argue that that is both in his rights as long as we're not, we're not uh, impeding someone else's ability to use their property. And I believe our plan succeeds in that. I I I believe our plan succeeds in screening this project and making sure that the neighbors are able to enjoy their their own property and continue to look at a natural viewscape. They won't be looking at panels, and um, I just wanted to clarify that. Uh.
One minute, please.
Gotcha. I may be done. I just wanna make sure I cover. There was a a mention of a twenty foot buffer, twenty five foot buffer being uh, not enough. Uh, we agree it probably wouldn't be along the road. That's why we have a hundred foot buffer there, not twenty five. There are parts of this property where we do go to the county minimum of twenty five. It's very few areas of this property, and it's areas that are heavily wooded on both sides of the property line and will remain so, at least on our side of the property line. So that twenty five foot remark really uh, isn't accurate when it comes to especially the roadway where we're really working on the buffer uh, and most other parts of the property. We have a hundred plus five hundred foot setbacks in many parts of the property uh, and and considerably more buffer than twenty five feet. So just wanted to clarify that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there? Is there anyone else who'd like to? I have, I have questions once you close. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Saying, I'm gonna close and then let him ask questions. Are you? Let me go ahead and close it, then you can.
Well, hold on just a second. I just have a question. Has anyone gotten calls from citizens who wanted to speak tonight but could not be here because they were still snowed in or without power? I just wanna make sure all our citizens have a chance to speak.
I just got emails.
I got a call from somebody that didn't know if they were gonna be here on Friday because of the power situation on Saturday.
You got three, you got one.
Emails.
Email, you got an email. Did anybody?
Yeah.
Comment, if they wanted to speak. We could keep the public hearing open, but if it's not necessary, close.
Yeah, well, there were people who said they could not be here because, there were people who, uh, two of the people that I talked to didn't, three of, all three didn't have power, and two of them had anticipated on coming to the meeting, but were impeded by boundaries and no power.
Well, I do think it's every citizen's right if they feel like they wanna speak at a public hearing, and with there being a state of emergency this past week, we certainly could keep the public hearing open and give them a chance to speak at our next meeting in two weeks. Um, we still could have closing comments, or we still can meet. I will tell you and everyone that I think there is a place for solar, but I'm not sure I think it should be in an area with this many houses and with this type of topography, but I've it's been a while since I've been out there, especially with the snow, so I didn't get out there this past week. I would like time to go back and and look at it one more time uh, and to call some of the people on the petition. So if we could do that, and then we could phone on both uh,
Solar and.
Things next, at our next meeting, because we have Whalebone coming up. Chris, is that okay? Is that good, that we can keep it open?
He's had a motion, because I'll second.
That would be my motion.
Let me just go.
Sure.
So, so the issue is, you know, because of the, the storm that we had and people being uh, not being able to get out, some people do not have power uh, to their home electricity, and Mrs. Long has requested, um, is going to request that we leave the public hearing open till our next meeting on the twenty fifth of, uh, and give other people an opportunity to come and speak who voiced a um, that they wanted to come, that they wanted to speak to the board, but they could not make it tonight. So, Mrs. Long, if you wanna make that motion.
Yes, I I would, because I think if they cared enough to call and ask and and inform us that they have the right to speak. So that would be my motion.
And I will second to leave the public hearing open till the next board meeting.
Alright, so there's a motion and a second to the board to leave this um, public hearing open until our next meeting, which is January twenty fifth discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so the, the, the motion passes, so this public hearing will be revisited on January twenty fifth during our public hearing. Those who have, uh, those who have already spoken will not be able to speak at that meeting. So this is for people who voiced an interest in coming and speaking. Those of you who have already spoken, we have certainly I appreciate it, appreciate you coming out. I know it's difficult for I know one gentleman who was out a week before the power, the the storm came and he's still out, so that's two weeks, so. Um, I think that's is the right and equitable thing to do to make sure we do, are able to listen to all of our citizens. So, motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Chairman, I I'd just like to clarify, uh, for the applicant, for everybody, that um, in the event that additional people come and speak at public comment, I think under your bylaw, it would be appropriate at public hearing to afford the applicant another five minute rebuttal in the event there are new comments to address.
Absolutely. I'm sure we have questions for him as well.
Yeah.
Alright, I know Mr. Thomas has questions, uh, question for him, so you will be allowed to answer and ask, uh, have questions and rebuttal as well. Okay? With that said, this is postponed until January twenty fifth. Thank you, Ms. Long. I don't think so. We, we, we've already postponed it. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Shebel, it's nice to see you out and about.
Alright, under new business, uh, gap funding for emergency requests for employ- and in powerhouse. Mr. Partner, are you doing that?
Mr. Chairman, in lieu of the services that are, that are being provided in in this environment.
I'm gonna move that, you know, we do, I'm gonna move we do it. I think Mr. Sealy was gonna do that, so he'll second it. Alright.
That, I was, that's what I was gonna do exactly.
Motion second. It's been motioned by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Sealy, that we uh, provide the gap funding emergency request for in powerhouse.
Three thousand and.
Yeah, it was like, it's three thousand nine hundred and fifty nine dollars.
In the amount of three thousand, which is the county's share of what they're asking all the other counties to do.
Correct.
Is this in addition to five thousand dollars already budgeted?
Yes, yes, it's a gap. Yes, because I don't know what happened to their federal funding, but it's fallen through the, through the, through the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Parton. Great presentation.
Best one yet.
So there's a, there, so there is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Um, item number seven is a discussion of sheriff's use of a public safety rodi- ra- radio system. I asked, um, I had a conversation with Mr. Cully. The sheriff has purchased and implemented a encryption system in lieu of the climate and the things that are going on with public safety officers with with police. Hasn't happened in the county, but he's trying to be proactive and ensuring that no uh, officers are ambushed because people can hear what's going on or where they're responding. Um, the sheriff and I had a conversation. Certainly, my concern was that the fire and rescue chief does not have uh, access to that the law enforcement calls, well, as some of the, count, Mr. Cully doesn't have access. It's one hundred percent for law enforcement. And um, I talked to the sheriff. We had a very good discussion, um, some good points and 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 counterpoints. But I wanted to make the board aware that I had the conversation with the sheriff. I think at some point I'd like to, for us to have some two on two meetings with the sheriff so we could at least understand his rationale as to why he's implemented the encryption system and why he feels that the uh, fire chief and county admin, Mr. Cully in particular, and Mr. Whiteman, who usually accompanies them on many calls, um, why they doesn't feel they should have access. So, just wanna make the board aware, hopefully you'll call the sheriff, and we couldn't do it in the closed session because it didn't meet the legal criteria for a closed session. And because of safety matters and some of the discussion, the sheriff didn't want it to be sitting here in public, so um, kind of divulging his secret sauce, so. Attorney says so. Mr. Anderson.
There's no applicable exception to public safety?
Not, not for this, for this particular, uh, the, the encryption issue. We, we did not see an exception in FOIA for this.
Are there any, are there any exceptions for public safety?
I'll, I can check for you, but I'll blanket open, like a general catchall public safety, not to my knowledge, yeah.
Okay, I'd appreciate it to check.
I will certainly do so.
Because I, I would think that's something that the whole board should be able to discuss, and.
Yeah, I thought it would be, I just thought it would be, um, since we own the equipment, we pay for the equipment. I thought it would be, um, would behoove the whole board to be able to have questions, so. But we, we were advised against it, and certainly we, the sheriff didn't feel it was appropriate to discuss it in uh, public, so we didn't wanna do that. Is the board okay with that decision and that, or additional comments about?
I, I would just like a little more information. Uh, I've came from a jurisdiction where fire and rescue could not transmit on police, on the police wavelength. And um, I understand that completely. Um, I guess I'm just wanna know some of the details, I guess, that's uh, to have a better understanding of what can and can't happen at this.
And that's what I told the sheriff. He indicated that of the, I think I talked to Mr. Black, and I think I talked to Mr. Sealy, I think I talked to that, Mr. Thomas. So, I talked to everybody, but you, yeah, I sent you, yeah. Um, I think there should be some conversation because I told the sheriff. I believe that if there are decisions made that affect the county, although he's the sheriff and he has autonomy with the sheriff's office, the, the reality of it is we do pay a bulk of the compensation funds come from the, from the, from the county. And I think we should work together. He said, you know, he, and I just said, we should, we should work together and we should make sure that we have the communication. I'm not saying he doesn't have the authority to do it. I'm just saying I'd like for the board to hear his rationale and be able to ask questions. So, I, hopefully we could do a couple two on twos or that's cool. We can't, can't do three, so we can do two, but if you would call the sheriff's office and work together, a couple people wanna go, that certainly would be, would be my suggestion. Okay.
Or maybe just a written explanation, just say, hey, this is what I was thinking. You know, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah. Well, like I said, he and I debated, we had a good discussion for about an hour or so. Um, he's got a lot of things to say, as I did, so.
I'd like to see something from the county attorney that would allow us to all meet in a closed meeting, because I think we had a closed meeting for software security, so we ought to be able to have a closed meeting for police security.
Speak with staff and update them tomorrow. I was looking at that exact exception that you just mentioned for software security, and it it's, it discusses uh, plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity and specific cybersecurity threats. So in that, in that instance, we had, they had received cybersecurity threats and they were addressing them, but I'm gonna dig into this and and I will circle back tomorrow with staff and update you.
Yeah, ours is about safety of the officers responding to um, calls, you know, not cybersecurity, but.
Right, I mean, the terrorism.
Terrorism, yeah.
Quality, I mean, if this, if this can be fairly characterized as terror. Quality. I mean, if this, if this can be fairly characterized as terrorism, that, that.
Terrorism prevention, yes. It's terrorism, whether domestic or foreign, it's terrorism.
So we, we will look into that and report back tomorrow.
Okay. Then if it is at that time, then we'll contact the sheriff and we'll do it in closed session. Alright. Thank you, board members. Agenda item number eight is the informational calendar. Mr. Cully.
Board members, we included, um, as always, the, uh, capital projects update for your review. Don't still have a whole lot of things on the calendar. Monday is Martin Luther King Day. Officers are closed on the seventeenth. Our next regular meeting is the twenty fifth at six. And then, um, the one thing that's out there that you need to get with Pam, if you'd like to go to local government, uh, officials day at the Omni in Richmond, um, and meet, uh, with, uh, various general assembly members. That's Thursday, the third of February. But we do have to register for that, uh, for your attendance. So if you, if you'd like to go, please get with Pam. Our meeting is the eighth of February, Tuesday, the eighth, and then, uh, President's Day in February, the twenty first, which is uh, third Monday. That's another holiday. Hopefully we won't have any snow days in between all of that. But that's what we have on the calendar at this time.
Mr. Cully, a cou- couple of general questions. Uh, looking at the capital sheet, next to the last one, it says interconnect count and says deleted. Is that just a typo?
Interconnect. N- um, note it was a project that they, was deleted, I'm pretty sure, out of utilities.
Okay. Yeah, not the polecat one.
Yeah, no. Or just plot a belt right back. And I'll check on that one.
If, um, if we were to get a, another big storm this Sunday, Monday, how, how are we standing? Are we in need of anything that we can, board can assist with or?
I don't think so. We do have some employees out, um, as Omicron is working its way through the general public. Um, luckily it Monday's a holiday. So if it does snow, we got a little bit more time for cleanup before we really try to push to get open Tuesday versus it snowed Sunday, trying to get open Monday sometime during the day. Um, we talked, I talked today, um, to the, uh, deputy director, assistant director of public works. They're making all their provisions and plans, getting everything ready just in case it is bad. There is evidently a model that looks pretty bad, but then the other models look okay. Thursday, more like the, maybe the timeframe when things coalesce and we'll know how bad it might be, but. We'll be prepared as we possibly can be. Hopefully most of the trees in, in bad shape fell down already. So we'll just be pushing snow.
Mine is the only thing.
I have a question, Mr. Cully.
Alright, about this.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I was gonna go to the next, we want, is, uh.
The spec calendar.
The calendar? Yeah, I have two things, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Cully, on the a- agenda, um, request for a January joint board meeting from schools.
They normally present their budget to us in February. I think that's the only calendar.
You, do we?
Well, we need to start our budget work, our budget meetings too. I just wanted to make sure we get them on the calendar.
We haven't.
Whether you want to start those, that we usually start in February.
Late February or March. I don't know. I'm gonna present you the budget till March.
Okay.
Then, and we haven't, with, with Keystone going on right now and a changeover from one system to the other, we're, we're not. They're not in the budget yet on the county side.
What, what's gonna happen, Mr. Cully, is that we're gonna ask the school board to, um, present to us with their budget updates and in February. No, not February. In, in March. Would like to schedule something in March.
When is on their calendar? They normally present us the budget February. No, we normally have theirs before we do ours. They normally present to us in February.
In February. Hang on.
Usually the first meeting in February.
Why can't they, why can't they, why can't they report to us in, in?
Oh, so they don't meet February the fourth.
Can? Can they present?
They can't present on the eighth because they, the way the calendar falls for this February, their board meeting is not till the next Monday. Oh, I'll go right ahead.
Dr. Calvert, yes.
Good evening. Thank you for entertaining the opportunity to share additional information with you regarding the budget in a joint meeting. We did last evening at our school board meeting, adopt our twenty twenty-two meetings. And because there was only one meeting in February for the board of supervisors on February eighth, we did indeed alter our school board meeting to February seventh. We certainly are open to a later presentation to the school board, or excuse me, to the board of supervisors in March that would give us more time with the gubernatorial change and there could be some, um, impacts associated with the budget. But we are prepared if you prefer the February eighth date.
So, so what is, what is your preference? I mean, in terms, would, would you pre, would you prefer to present in February the eighth? Or would you prefer to present the first meeting in March?
We certainly appreciate additional time. Um, however, I do believe that my counterpart, Mr. Cully, would benefit from having advanced information. So if we did ultimately move towards March, then we would certainly be open and willing to commit to meeting with the administrative team on the county side to share some of that insight in advance.
Okay. But that, I think that would be pretty good. I would think if, if that could happen, uh, Dr. Calvert, if that could happen, that you could start off with the county. If you could make it work.
Here's, here's the issue.
Okay.
If they don't, if, if they present their budget in March, I normally present my budget in March. So I'm gonna prepare a budget based on what we can afford to do. Already have cut their budget, most likely. Then they're gonna stand up and make their presentation. So you're gonna be, or you're gonna push me to later in March, which is gonna push the public hearing later in April. Tax bills are still gotta be out and done by June fifth. You're gonna jan, if you, the schools are normally on February. If you give them till March, which I understand she'd like to have, then if I have the numbers in advance, then I've gotta mash those all into the rest of the budget.
Why can't you meet with her in February, with, in February?
I can.
And then from there, you're gonna pull your, your budget numbers together, correct?
Correct.
And then, so can she present?
She can.
If there's issues after you meet. Which we, I mean, we know there's gonna be some rub there. So we've had, we have to have an opportunity to discuss and.
That's why the February gives a little bit of time. Maybe you have a work that's.
We would still be presenting our budget on February seventh to the school board. So that information would be very public in relation to having insight associated with what we are proposing. What it does do is allows us between that February seventh presentation to the school board, if there are other modifications that occur in the state in the general assembly, because the session, I believe, would still be.
They are, yeah.
Open, that would allow us to make adjustments before coming to you so that it's more accurate. And that, of course, would have, um, conversation with the administrative team on the county side as well.
Correct. So where does that leave us?
So can we do February eighth and modify?
Tell Ms. Cully, tell you what. How would you like to do this? Give me, give me your time schedule, your timeframe in terms of when you'd like to hear the, the information that they have and when you'd like to present to the board.
The earlier I can get their request. So if we get that on the eighth after the seventh of February, that would be what we would start building their request in our budget. So that's what happens in our budgets request.
Right, I'm asking you. I understand. I'm just asking you.
You want them here on the eighth of February to, to present that information or wait? It, that's sort of irrelevant to me. I'd need to present my budget to you sometime in March, either the first meeting in March or the second meeting in March, hopefully.
So I'm gonna ask the same question. What is your preference in terms of them presenting, getting the information to us so that you can hear it and you can begin to work on? Is it February the eighth is, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
And she says she's gonna be ready. Is that your preference?
That is my preference.
Thank you, sir. Then, Dr. Calvert, if you could please be prepared on February the eighth for us?
Yes, sir. We certainly can accommodate that.
Okay. And certainly we can discuss how much time you need. We don't, I'm, I don't wanna box you in, but I certainly want to be proficient with our time and.
Absolutely. We certainly want to be respectful of your time.
Maybe ask a few questions if, if need be. So.
Yes. So my question to you is, would we have a joint work session prior to the February eighth presentation? Or did you want to have that after the fact?
I think after the fact would be the best.
Okay. So I will work with Mr. Cully, um, to set up something administratively. And if there's anything that he feels would be pertinent for you to have in advance of that presentation, I respectfully request that he pass that forward to you.
And we'll do the same.
Fabulous.
To give you, you know, we'll do the same. We'll try to give us all the week ahead of, make sure we don't get things at the end, but we can.
Sure.
Consider all.
That sounds great. Thank you.
So just to reiterate, you're gonna meet, have a discussion with Mr. Cully. You're gonna present on February the eighth. You'd like to have any questions that this board has a week prior to your presentation. Is that correct?
Repeat that last statement.
If we have questions from the, that regarding anything that you put together.
Oh, sure.
You want that a week before you present, I would think, right?
If you have questions associated with the February eighth presentation, I would imagine that we would establish a joint board meeting and then we would follow our typical routine of submitting things in advance. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna possibly close out the open items from our last joint meeting before our next joint meeting?
I think we have to. Uh, because we do have, we do have, still have questions about, after looking at, at our, uh, audit and our books, we do have, do have some questions.
Sure. I would assume that we would have additional agenda items as appropriate. For example, I know there's a legislative, um, action that I think we both may find would be beneficial for each of us to be lobbying for, and that's the removal of the support cap. So I think there's some other things that I can share and that you could share, um, that would be advantageous that evening.
Absolutely. And, and, and also was Mr. Cully's, uh, letter to the school board re- regarding, uh, transfer funds after the fiscal year?
I, I did go ahead and respond to that. I sent that directly to him and we have great clarity regarding your attorney's interpretation. And moving forward, we will be certain if there's a categorical change from category to category, we will absolutely come to the appropriating body and request approval in advance.
Mr. Cully, you sent that, that's already, did I miss it?
I can't, but she did respond.
Okay.
I, I can't recall either. Sorry.
Okay. Right.
Now, I don't think any board members received it, Mr. Cully. Alright, all minds agree. Thank you. We're good?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Closing board comments. Mr. Forehand.
No, sir.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, I have, um, I, too, I, I failed to mention in my opening board comments, the, the YMCA, um, and their efforts in this. Um, the YMCA opened, um, showers and, uh, places for charge. They were really big. They kind of, um, they did a great job. So, uh, to Sharika and her crew and staff, um, the citizens, there was lots of, I know warming shelters may not have been used, but I, um, I think she had dozens of citizens for several days, um, in there showering and, and using the facilities. Um, and that was open to anyone. You didn't have to be a Y member. You didn't even have to be a citizen of the county. And I know a lot of people on the western part of the county that were out, took advantage of that. So, thank you. Uh, Mr. Fincham, I think he's still here. Um, I would really, really, I appreciated the tour of the facilities. Um, I would like to see the facilities that will be on our agenda, um, coming up. So if we have a facility, a solar facility that's coming up on our agenda, I have not seen this one, um, the one that was on our, uh, agenda tonight.
Okay.
So anything that's coming up that's near to us, um,
road trip.
You know, then I would like to go visit them. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
I have none.
Mrs. Long?
Only that I need my field trips too, but I think we got that, that sort of set. So, everybody, please stay well.
And I've been to most of them, so I can help you, Ms. Long, if you like.
Alright, thank you.
I've already toured all. I have about five coming. Mr. Thomas?
Uh, yes, thank you. I did. One of my constituents, uh, Mr. Spinner, who is still in the audience, gave me a copy of, uh, Mechanicsville local newspaper that's published free. I think he gave a copy to Mr. Parton. Um, I, I'd hope staff would at least look at that to see how we could do something like that in the county if at all possible.
That in terms of the newspaper?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll let you.
My only, uh, comment is, are you, is that it, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you.
Um, thought about the, I appreciate the board members give me an opportunity to serve, um, again as your chairman. I will do the very best that I can again. Um, there were, well, I'll just do the best that I can. And I appreciate your support. Any other? Thank you.
No, I think Mr. Sealy's gonna handle that from now.
Handle what?
Alright, motion to adjourn. Some move, Mr. Chairman. Is there a second? It's been moved that we adjourn in proper second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are, we are adjourned.